Master Chief, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? And then if you can stay standing for our words of inspiration. All right. And it is the Honorable Reverend J. Donald Briggs, the Third Esquire. I asked him earlier. Pastor Jacob.
Thank you very much. My Father in Heaven, you are the Creator and the Sustainer of the universe. There is not one breath in our lungs that is not a gift of you. You make the rain fall and the plants grow so that we can live and move and have our being. You're worthy of all praise and glory of every single person who has ever lived because you're amazing and glorious, and there is no one like you, God. We thank you, God, for your kindness to us that we so often overlook and assume that we have accomplished so many things on our own, but when in reality, we only have what we've been given. So we ask, Lord, that you would humble us with the reality that you are God and we are not. We thank you, God, for your promise that you give wisdom to everyone who asks liberally. And so I ask in faith and not in doubting because we know that if anyone asks and he doubts, then he is like a wave of the wind tossed by the sea. I thank you for these people who have dedicated their time, more time than they probably anticipated, and more heartache and turmoil, and perhaps even money than they thought. I thank you for their service to us as people. We know, Lord, that you set up kings and you remove kings. We know that the heart of the king is like a river in your hand, and you direct it however you want. So we know, Lord, that somehow in ways we don't understand that you have set these people up to have the authority that they have in this place. So we ask that you would give them great wisdom. I ask that you would give them great service, hearts of servants for these people in this place. I ask that you bless their families. I ask that you provide for them. I pray, Lord, that you would help them to find their greatest joy in you. And if they don't know you, then I pray, Lord, that you would reveal yourself to them in unmistakable ways so that they could enjoy you forever and your Son, Jesus. I pray for the people of this city, Lord. It is so easy these days to be frustrated and scared and allow everything going on in the world to let us assume the worst about our neighbors instead of loving our neighbors as ourselves. Lord, remind us of the Second Greatest Commandment. I pray, Lord, that you would please help us to assume the best about one another in this city, to give one another the benefit of the doubt, to put one another's well-being in front of our own so that the Kingdom of Jesus can be reflected here in this place. Lord Jesus, I pray for my brothers and sisters in you who follow you and believe in you and have surrendered their lives to you. I thank you, Jesus, that even if we live in Claussen for the rest of our lives, that we are only temporary residents here because we know that you have prepared a place for us because that's what you have promised. We thank you, Jesus, for your promise that you will come again and you will restore all things and make all things right in your perfect justice and your peace. So we pray, Lord, as temporary citizens here, that you would please allow us as your people to be salt and light, to not seek to get this society to go back to something in the past, but for us to reflect what's coming in the future, your coming Kingdom where you will rule and reign and where all peoples of the world who have trusted in you will be united under the banner of the cross and the empty tomb of Christ. Lord, we pray that you would please use us as your people to cast your light in this place. Lord, we thank you for your love. We thank you for being so kind and gracious to us and sending your own Son as a person to earth to live the life we should have lived, to die the death we should have died, and to rise again from the dead so that if anyone believes in him, they would not perish but have everlasting life. And Father, we ask now that you would please help us to be quick to listen and slow to speak and slow to become angry because we know that the anger of man does not produce the righteousness of God. And we pray these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Jacob. You know what's next.
All right. Mayor Scripture.
Here.
Mayor Portem Sampson.
Here.
Councilmember Georges.
Here.
Councilmember Moffett. Councilmember Shepherd. That's a full vote, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I'd like to make a motion that we amend the agenda to add the application to the DDA. Did you get me that date?
There wasn't an email.
Oh, okay.
It was in October.
Okay. I think it's the end of, I think it's November 1st.
Yeah, I think it is too.
That we add the application to the DDA for Jeffrey Margulis, DDA Board, with a term to begin November 1st of 2021. And I'm not sure when it ends, but let's, whenever it ends.
Are you adding that to consent?
Yeah, adding that to consent. And then also to move the presentation for Proposal 2 and invite the speaker to speak at public comment. Although my question is, would that be for items on the agenda or after? Not that it matters. I mean, if it does.
Depends on your timer.
Well, if we have a ton of people showing up, we're going to set ourselves a nice three-minute thing. And if anybody has questions, we'll let them do it. But otherwise.
I think we'll be okay.
Yeah, I think we'll be okay. So yeah, to move that to off the presentation and to move the one on to public comment.
I'll sport it.
So you wanted Item 6 to include that for public comment? And not public comment on Item 12?
No, both public comments are fine. I'm just saying presentation would be off the agenda.
Presentation C off the agenda and just have it in public comment. That's the intention there.
Yep. All right. So we'll call them.
Councilmember Georges.
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
No.
Mayor Portem Sampson?
Yes.
Mayor Scripture?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Adjustments are made.
All right. Then next on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda, which is the minutes of the last meeting. You said you had a, but you'll correct the error.
It's already corrected. Yes, it was a typo.
Okay, so we're good. All right. Accepting the pavement surface valuation of the Pacer Grant Study from SEMCOG for 1244.04. And then the list of bills is presented and the application for Jeffrey Margulis to the DDA.
Madam Mayor, move the consent agenda to be approved as modified. Second.
All right. We'll call.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Sampson?
Yes.
Mayor Scripture?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Councilmember Georges?
Yes.
We're good. Thank you.
All right. Then next on the agenda, we have public comment for items on the agenda. If anybody is here with comments for on the agenda, they are invited to come up and speak.
Hi, I'm Susan Phillips, and I've been here in Claussen since 1978. And I'm just reiterating what I brought before the Planning Commission last week. This was so great that our city paid to have an advertisement for the Planning Commission. And I'm just asking, because of the transparency, I know you, Mayor Scripture especially, was interested in transparency. Why is this not in our newspaper? I really think that the.
It's not been approved yet.
Well, we all understand what a draft map is. We understand a preliminary map. We understand it's not, and it says right on there, "draft." So I'm just saying, why can we not have this in the paper to inform the voters? Just for transparency. That's what I'm asking.
Anybody like to speak to, ask, question? What was the first thing you held up? I actually don't know what you held up the first time.
The notice of the Planning Commission meeting.
Oh, just the notice.
Yeah, that August put up.
That we publish.
Yeah, the one we legally have to republish?
Correct. Yeah, it was in the Royal Oak Review. And I mean, if we did the same thing, I think there are a lot of seniors that don't have access to the computer and that they would really appreciate it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for items?
Yeah. Technically, you were on the agenda until a minute ago, so line up and give your. Well, that's why I asked. Yeah, that's.
It's preference. I would have picked the first one first, too.
Sure, absolutely.
Can I bring these packets up? Can you pass them out?
Sure. If you want me, I can do it while you.
I was gonna say, why don't you give it to the clerk?
Hi, I'm Nikki Reed. I'm here on behalf of Proposal 2. So I have some packets that August is passing out. And there's more copies in the back if anyone's interested in them. So I'm going to talk about, first of all, the medical benefits of it, and then I'll talk a little bit about the revenue in opiates. And it's all in the packet. My mother-in-law, I actually really like, she's a very sweet person, baked cookies with my kids today. They had little Halloween decorations on them. She's had two different kinds of cancer in her mouth and throat that has made it very difficult for her to eat, very difficult for her to put on weight. And due to previous medical issues, she's not able to tolerate opiates. So medical marijuana has been her main form of pain management for the past several years. And I can imagine that probably everyone in this room has a similar story about a family member or a friend or a neighbor who is using medical marijuana to treat their pain, which is much safer than opiates. My next point, which I'm sure that the city council and probably a lot of citizens are far more interested in, is the revenue. So the first two articles in that packet are on the revenue. The first one, I pulled right off the Michigan SOS website. This is how much money cities got in March of this year in the excise tax revenue for the marijuana facilities in their communities. So we are anticipating that Claussen, if Proposal 2 passes, will get approximately $150,000 annually with an additional $5,000 in licensing fees and additional $50,000 in annual property tax revenue. Am I allowed to ask if you have questions?
Sure.
Does anyone have questions?
Actually, I was going to ask. Are you, is it done?
No, I have a couple more things.
Go through, because then I'll ask if they have a question. We've got about another minute left, and then, yeah, I'll give anybody a chance to ask questions.
Okay. The second article is about a city Lowell, I believe you say it, right here in Michigan. And it talks about the financial benefits of dispensaries for the city. So I thought that that might be useful. The third article in there is about how marijuana can help offset the opioid epidemic. And I'm actually a licensed substance abuse counselor. I spent six years at the methadone clinic in Madison Heights. And I have seen firsthand the devastation that opiate abuse does to people. It destroys their lives. It takes away their family. It takes away their house. And I've also watched people get clean from heroin by using marijuana. So in terms of harm reduction, I think that marijuana, and the studies back me, it's not, I think. I've seen that marijuana is a much safer alternative for people. And this is a CNN article that discusses some actual medical studies, in case you don't believe me. And the last article I put in there is just a snapshot of employment, unemployment rates, and how much people can expect to make, which we thought might be useful for you to look at. Questions?
Does anybody have any comments for the speaker or questions? I actually have one quite, well, I have one statement. And just so we're clear, it's on the ballot. It's not something that council has any say in just because you've said us and how we feel. And it's, but it's not our, we put it to the people of the community. So we don't, we're not, we are not voting on this. We're letting the community vote. But you have one question. And do you, well, you must know. Do you know who the, who's the source of funding behind?
Jobs for Claussen.
Yeah, I know. But who's funding jobs for Claussen and jobs for all the other cities?
I don't know who funds them. I just know that jobs for Claussen is who is funding us.
All right.
My understanding is that it's a nonprofit.
Okay. All right. That was just my only question. I just wondered. Anybody else have comments?
I'd like to know how you figure you're going to have more police and fire.
With all of the added tax revenue, if that's how the city wants to allocate it, then that's how they can allocate it. It's definitely not on anyone to dictate to the city how, but that is how we've seen it used in other places.
Everybody just reads it's going to be more police and fire, improve city services and economic development. I just kind of know. On $100,000.
Pardon?
On $100,000, how are you going to do all three of them?
Well, we're projecting $250,000 per year. And I certainly can't dictate to the city how they should budget that.
Just wondering.
Anything else? All right. Appreciate your time. And you did leave some in the back, right?
I did. Thank you.
All right. Actually, went out of order, public comment then, consent agenda. But that's done, so yay. All right. So next, we have no proclamations this evening, but we do have a presentation by John Kazor, Kazor, Kazor. Municipal Analytics regarding financial management. Please. Do you need any? No, cool. All right.
No. I believe you have the proposal that was submitted for financial modeling. I was asked to come and just introduce myself and talk a little bit about the proposal and what's being considered. I'm John Kazor with Municipal Analytics. I've been doing financial forecasting for municipalities in Michigan for over 25 years. And the trend, or the best practice, I should say, is really to start looking more long-term at finances in municipalities. For too long, there have been one-year budgets, one-year plans that are very short-sighted, and it's difficult to anticipate what's going to happen down the road. It also makes it more difficult to plan and anticipate large projects, street improvements, debt issues, that sort of thing, the capital projects. Additionally, as we learned with recessions in '08, '09, and then more recently, if you're not planning and anticipating where your risks are, it's difficult to actually manage through them. So what we do is like to build a model, populate it with your data, work with the city to develop the assumptions, and then put in different scenarios that we want to test and evaluate in whether or not the city can afford them or how they can afford them, what the priorities are, shifting things around to make sure that whatever the highest priority is, is being met in the budget and not just short-term, but five, 10 years down the road. I just left a landfill in Muskegon this afternoon to come here. We put together a 25-year plan for them, but they are a much larger operation that has to look much further down the road. But eventually, every community should be anticipating and studying, where are we going? What are the city's goals? What are your strategic plans? How are you going to achieve those with the limited dollars that you have? And a financial model is the first step in getting to that point of understanding, here's the totality of our budget, including the actual budget, our capital plan, our personnel costs, everything that leads into it, our revenue sources, our debt, and then trying to prioritize and evaluate how we can take these limited resources and use them most efficiently to meet the goals. So that's the primary proposal that was requested for services. This is a project that, at the end, the city would have a functioning financial model tool in Excel that can be used by staff and updated. I would be available for a year after development to just support and answer questions and help make sure that the staff is comfortable using it. And we'd also be working with the city, probably talking to council, talking to department heads to understand what are the needs, what are the priorities, so that we can start building some assumptions in there. And then understanding, what does the community want? Is it roads? Is it better police and fire protection? What are the needs? And how can we, again, take these dollars and move them around? And if there is a need to go out for a special military request or a bond approval, to actually have the financial data to back that up rather than just saying, this is something we need. So I'd be happy to answer questions. That's really just a brief introduction of what a financial model is. There's a lot that could be said about it, but I don't want to waste your time if not necessary.
George, do you want to? Do you want to go to your microphone if you had anything to ask?
I think it's a good idea. Okay. This is something that the city does need. And the big negative for me right now is my computer. I can't connect to see his proposal. Okay? So I do apologize.
I'd be happy to give you a printed version. Oh, there's one there.
There we go. I got the full packet. I always have a backup.
Slaps it up there. All right. Well, while you're looking, how about I see if council member.
So you have a forecast for 10 years? And do you do beyond that? Or do you short-term? And do you cater to whatever type of timeframe we'd like to have?
We can build it for whatever timeframe. The best practice is five years because that's generally reasonable. But I can tell you that from now until five years from now, a lot can change. But we want the model there always looking ahead to anticipate what might change and how we'll react. One big question is always, how much fund valent should we have? Well, that's, that depends on what your risks are. We've got to look at that and say, okay, where are you susceptible to change or impact? If the economy goes down or if you have an emergency, if a special millage isn't renewed, and we still want to provide that service, how are we going to do that? So five years is the typical. But I like to build my models 10 years because what I find is a five-year capital plan gets you so far. And then it's that sixth year or seventh year where there's this big project that isn't even on the radar in the five-year forecast. But if we extend that out, we can see it, and we can start working towards addressing that early on rather than waiting until year six to say, oops, we need a couple million dollars now.
And would there be flexibility already built into your plan for emergency situations that we haven't seen? Say that there's, I don't know.
2014 flood?
I was thinking also maybe 2012 and the changes that happened for the spring of that year. But yeah, you're right. Those types of floods.
There's, the tool is built to be dynamic, to address any anticipated need. And then to also say, okay, we've got something coming down the pipe. Are we ready for X event? And that's where the risk analysis goes in and says, okay.
In other words, it lets you plug in different scenarios.
Right. You can put in different scenarios. We can put in different assumptions and run those and say, okay, this is what we think might happen if this happens. And we want to make sure we've always got enough money set aside to address a $2 million issue, whatever the number might be.
Master.
My biggest question would be what our financial director's thoughts are about the proposal and the project.
I'll let her answer that question.
That's wise.
Well, I definitely think that a financial model looking forward is a really good plan. And to get a start on it with somebody outsourcing the services at this point in time would be a good idea.
Oh, okay, good.
And again, it's really just, I'm building the tool with the support of staff, but it would be handed off for them to use, and then I would support it.
And didn't you say, I think when we, when you first presented some of it, didn't you say that you also are available? I know you said the first year, but you're also available because at some point.
Right. Yes. I'm available to update. And yeah, if you decide you want, you know, three new funds and you want to add all sorts of gimmicks to it, we can do that. Cool.
How much, how much input or how many, how many hours would our people have to put in to get your databases up?
Great question. The initial request is usually just information that you have. So compiling budgets and the audits I pull off the website, the state website or your website. If you don't have a capital plan already, that could take some time, but I understand that's in development. Looking at some issues that take the most time are really deciding how deep we want to go on some of these assumptions. So I can build a model with very little input, but it's not very meaningful. So at some point, I need to reach out and say, okay, start sending me more information or let's sit down. If you want a number, I'd probably say 30 hours over the course of the development of total staff time. That would be on the outer edge. Probably less than that.
Councilmember Georges, did you want to finish whatever you were? Did you get a chance to look?
Again, like I said, I think it's a tremendous idea. And I think it's something, excuse me. I think it's a good idea, and I think it's something the city needs. The question is now, what's our next? Where do we go from here?
Well, I have a few questions to get to that question. So, because on your proposal, you've included some of the additional items that we talked about. I'm going to set the water and sewer thing aside because at some point, we were talking about we've got a few different options. And I know we've got a grant for that, so we can set that aside. And the conversation was to include you with some of the other ones we had and then look at that as a, right. So that, but the other ones were not, we hadn't necessarily had the other things lined up. The central services cost allocation. Just explain that because I know what it means, but.
Okay. So central, so the general fund provides HR, legal, financial management, other services that support all of the other funds in the city. So what we try to do through a central service cost allocation is to say how much of the general fund costs should be recovered from these other funds, so water, sewer, any other special revenue fund. There are funds that, and I like to allocate to all funds, but as a policy perspective, you might say, no, we're not going to charge that fund because it's really, you know, the library fund. If there's a separate library fund because it's kind of scraping by already. Or the general fund's already subsidizing it, so there's no point in charging it. But we'd like to at least know what the true cost of that operation is.
So kind of the audit. How would you allocate that across the different funds?
That would be one.
Because that's an administrative, right?
Right. That would be one option. Right.
That would be an example.
Exactly.
Okay. All right. So then the comprehensive labor costing model. Again, do you want to explain?
Right. So that is taking a look at all of the city's classifications, positions, and doing a detailed evaluation of costs. So this is something that finance would do every budget year to look at what is the step for this person and their pay? What sort of benefits are they getting for health insurance, life insurance, et cetera? And do the whole cost and then allocate that out to all the different departments and funds. What we do if we wanted to go that and add that is really say, let's not just do that for one year, but let's do that for five years so that we can really see what the impacts are. The benefit is you get better long-term forecasts. HR personnel costs are 80% to 90% of your budget. So we really could focus on those. But it also helps with labor negotiations. If you're looking at reclassification, if you're looking at a new classification study, compensation study, what does the impact of that? Because it's not just pay. When you increase pay, your self-security payments go up, your life insurance goes up. These other costs go up. So we want to make sure those are all factored in there. If the city's looking at some different options for health insurance or other benefits, we can plug those in there and say, okay, here's the cost. This is the cost of the city. This is the cost of the employee, and start evaluating those as well. So that's, that would give you that added tool to really do a deep dive into the cost of your biggest cost center, which is labor.
So does that also, and I'm guessing maybe not, but does it also include, because we don't have it, pay banding for different jobs?
It wouldn't include that necessarily, no.
But you had just said steps.
Right. If you have steps.
Like we got that.
So if you had steps, then yes, we would do that. If you don't, then we have to look at what the current pay is and then inflating it from there. There are obviously compensation studies one could do to get that information. There are obviously compensation studies one could do to get that information.
And then, the user fee study?
So user fees, the city's charging fees for electrical inspections, and permits for various things, and planning commission, and appeals boards and whatnot. Those are not updated very often in many communities. And the idea is that we would, first of all, the first part of that is doing the cost allocation study, so we know what the true costs of building department is, or water, sewer department, you know, so that we've got those true costs. And then to say, okay, how do we recover those costs from the people who are using the services? So, general fund doesn't have a lot of user services, there are some, recreation fees and that sort of thing, but there are some funds, if you have a building fund, that's supported almost entirely by people who are using the building services. So we want to make sure we're recovering the right amount with the right fees. So that involves cost allocation, and then a determination of what the fee should be, a survey of other communities to evaluate where you are relative to the market.
So, excuse me, if I was to tie those back to the scope of the orig, of the primary that you have in front of us, it would seem to me, because those are significant deficits that we have right now, it would seem to me that you would almost need some of that in order to do the cost.
Again, we can make assumptions.
But I, I'd like, it would be nice to have actual.
And then there's, then there's the more precise.
I agree with that. The other thing too, I was curious about, when you're talking about costs, of how often you would go back and analyze and reassess cost, a one-year, would it be quarterly?
Almost everything that we do is a tool that we give to the city. So we can say, here's the tool, you can update it every year, or every three years, or you can invite us back in, and we'll do it. But the idea is that you have the tool to use, you have all the reference material, so that you're not having to pay to have it done again. But again, to your point, how much staff time does that take? It does require more staff time.
But once it's created, it's kind of, I mean, whether it's our staff, or whether it's you, it's a, it's a.
Yes, it's much easier.
So, question, because it's something that had been brought before us a while ago, and, and this is actually kind of random, and not necessarily about this, ClearGov. Do you know, you, I'm sure.
I'm not familiar with ClearGov.
You're not familiar with it?
Familiar with a lot of them, that one I'm not.
Okay, then I won't ask the question, because my question was going to be, what do you think about it? So now I, yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah. All right, any other questions on the?
Just, just a quick question, okay? As a consultant, okay, you charge a fee, and I have to believe that in your 25 years, okay, there's a certain amount of payback to the city for your services. So let's say your cost on CNN, say $13,000. I would presume that someplace along the line, we're going to recover your, your service fees by corrections, additions, subtractions?
That's a great question. I would say, some of my clients use the model and save a lot. Shelby Township has probably saved $30 million from a investment they made in 2008 for $8,000. So, that's one example. Others will do the study, will present the information, will provide the model, and then it just sits there. So there's zero payback. If nobody acts on it, there's no value. So, part of the project is looking at, you know, is there anything in the budget that's being overlooked? Are there expenses that we don't need? Are there things that you could consider? Part of that is just, you know, after all these years of experience, I can look at a budget and say, okay, that's an area you might want to focus on, and I know your new finance director is looking at things like that as well, to find savings. But the idea is that, by having a tool, you're now being more efficient with what you're doing, and when you make decisions, they're informed decisions based on information, as opposed to guesses, and that will definitely save money over the long run.
Were you the one, or your tool, the one that did that, I think it was, was it Rochester? That had the tax per population and?
Oh, you mean the graph is for how the communities have, were taxed? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I think so. Was that you?
I, I did the Rochester model, I don't remember which graph you're talking about.
The one that shows us having an incredibly high tax to person ratio compared to all the other cities.
No, I probably didn't do that one.
Yeah, right.
No, in Rochester, I, the city management hired me, I was right there. I, I did not do a comparison of other cities for that project.
Oh, was that you then, Mr. Patrino? Yeah.
With that model.
Yeah, that was mine. I mean, it was a good graph.
Oh, yeah, it was insightful.
Yes. Okay, any other, Councilmember Maffet?
Good.
Well, you know what, for the sake of.
I was just going to say, I like the fact that these are additional items that we just talked about, I think those are valuable, and I think we need to consider those, so.
And I'm going to just, sorry, interrupt you. If you want me to give a formal proposal for those other services, I can do that. I've kind of given you a range of prices, but if you want a formal proposal, I can give that to you, so you've got a real number, rather than just say, eh, somewhere.
But that's the range.
Right.
Okay, if I may, I'd like to make a motion that we actually, what is it, approve, adopt, do, whatever?
Approve.
Yeah. The proposal in front of us, and include in it the central services, the comprehensive labor, and the user fee, and the water, not to exclude it, but might be considered, it's considered separately with some other comparisons we have, include those components, because we know the range, and you can go ahead and give us back an actual price, but I make a motion that we include, that we do this.
Be a not-to-exceed with the?
Yeah, not to exceed the top end of your range. Yeah, how's that? Taking out the, the one, and that can be done separately. So that's my motion.
I'll second that.
All right, now, many, now that we've done asking questions, any discussion?
So, you're talking about approving the, so I see the central services allocation studies between $10,000 and $16,000, is that what you're, and the water and sewer utilities?
No, that's the one I, I said.
Took out?
Yep.
So the labor cost between $7,500 and $12,000, and then this user fee study between $18,000 and $23,000, so that's all added together, so you're talking about?
Plus the, plus the 12, or, for the tool.
So, let me just say that the, if you do the user fee study, the central cost allocation study's included in that.
Oh, there you go, okay.
So you're, you're saying, the financial model for 12, $750, not to exceed $12,000 on the comprehensive labor model, and the $23,000 not to exceed on the user fee study.
Did you get that?
So, can we get a total that we're talking about? Because we're talking about, it's like $60,000, I'm going to do some math here.
I have to do my math, because I would.
I mean, I guess, so, my point is that I think these, those are big numbers, and I think that, personally, I think a formal proposal of the exact costs, so then we can have a discussion of how we're going to allocate monies in the budget to cover this, I mean, that's a big number to just say, yeah, let's do it. I, I think we need to have a more formal proposal to look at, and then a discussion about how we're going to pay for it. I'm not disputing that it's a good idea, and it's what we should do, but you can't be, you know, let's be prudent over here, and, and let's be reckless over here. I think we should speak in specifics, and then, like I said, understand how we're going to pay for it out of the budget. That's my thoughts.
Councilmember Georges? Any comments?
Not at this point.
Councilmember Shepherd? Any comments?
No.
Mayor Potem?
All the information we got was pretty clear.
Comments? All right, I'm, I'm comfortable with a not-to-exceed, that you would come back with a more of an actual, as long as, because you're at the high range. And I think this is, one, this is something that is so crucial to, it's so much information that we need and have not had to make good decisions for so, so long, and I think it's important. I think that you have to spend money sometimes to save it, and understand it, and be able to make good decisions about it. And that is our job, to make good decisions about the money in this, the whole money in this community.
One quick question.
Yes.
In the process of you going through and taking a look at our systems, and our books, and our numbers, are you going to be doing an evaluation of our system itself?
Which system?
Well, it's BSNA.
The financial.
Not necessarily, but we'll be pulling data from it.
You mean our software system, or?
No, 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 I'm talking about the numbers.
I'm not sure.
I'm not sure what you mean by the, which system.
I'm not sure what you mean.
Well, you're going to gather data, correct? Okay. When you're looking at this data, the raw data, are you making any type of evaluation as to the accuracy, to the sense of, making the sense of the numbers?
Oh, isn't that what you said earlier? You said you looked at budget, is that what we're talking?
Right, so, so I will, we will look at the numbers, I think the auditors will deal with whether it's fully valid and accurate, but I would probably give feedback on if there's a report that I think this could be done better, or here's a better way of doing this, I would certainly share that information.
That's what I'm looking for.
Yeah. So to improve your own operations and make things better, yes, that's definitely just part of professional courtesy work.
Once you start, how long, how long is it before we start seeing some kind of reports back from you?
Well, if it was just the financial model, I said 90 days. These others, I know that a user fee study can take several months, because of the extra collection of data that we need. The labor costing, I will talk about two options you have there. One of them is, we build it in Excel, the other is, you subscribe to software and we load the data up there, and that's a cheaper option.
You can come back when you give the?
Right, so I can present both of those options more specifically. One of them has the recurring subscription cost, the other you handle in-house. But I will say that the subscription gives you a nice cloud-based platform that is easy to work with, whereas the Excel does get a bit of a challenge to, to manage constantly.
Does the cloud one update, I don't know, labor, any information out there?
Well, you would update it.
You would update it, okay, so it's a data, okay.
And the Excel spreadsheet, is it, do you get a better what-if scenario with the Excel?
For the labor costing, the labor costing models that I use, I think the what-if on the, the subscription model is better.
Okay.
Just because it's got a much more powerful, specific intention behind it. Excel is, again, it's a little clunkier, but we can make it work.
So you would recommend the?
I, I would recommend it, A, it would be much faster, and B, it's easier, but the downside is, there is a recurring cost, and that's something you'd have to think about.
Can you put that in your numbers?
Yes.
You were saying $30 million was saved by Shelby Township over 13 years, is that about right? So for a community our size, what could we expect in the same timeframe?
That's a great question. I don't know. You aren't, you're, you probably aren't planning to build a new expensive court building that the financial model says, don't do it.
I read that, yeah, I read the story, that's in the paper, yeah.
So, what, what they've used the model for, in conjunction with their cost allocation, is to really understand some difficult decisions. So we did that model just as the Great Recession was starting, the data collection that we were going through, when I started, again, started looking at the numbers, they weren't making sense. So on that project, I actually started calling real estate agents and asking what's going on, and I, I detected the recession very early, because Shelby was a booming community, and all of a sudden, Pulte stopped building, which was a major sign. So, we were able to very quickly say, that's not going to work, this grand plan that you have. Since then, they've used it to carefully evaluate selling their senior apartments complex, going through labor negotiations, closing and bonding their pension liability, building a new court building for much less money, building a new police station using available cash. So these are all things that they've looked at the, the model, and said, how can we get desired project facility and still not break the bank? So that's how they've used it, and again, through many labor negotiations, and very difficult conversations with employees, they've, they've used it quite successfully.
They don't have a downtown, is there another community that's used this that'd be similar to, to our, our community?
I would say Rochester.
Okay.
As an example. So, and, and James was very clear with what he wanted in that model, and we built it to work that way, and it was very useful to them.
Did that include the new parking structures that were?
I won't take any responsibility for those.
The model was used to project the cost in the revenue.
Here's a fun fact, Glenn and I graduated from the same high school, that would be Rochester High. And I was way before him.
Nah, two years.
Right, and close.
So we, we've also used models in Northville, I mean, I could list dozens of communities that have used them, so, counties, bigs and small communities.
Okay, so potentially, there could be big savings as a result of having?
And I think, sometimes it's not necessarily savings, but it's the right way to spend the dollars that you've got.
Which ultimately could save.
Right.
From making, we make mistakes that cost money.
Exactly.
Okay.
All right, anything else? Can I call the vote?
Call the vote.
Sorry. Mayor Potem Sampson?
Yes.
Mayor Scripture?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Councilmember Georges?
Yes.
Councilmember Maffet?
No.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Kuzor, make it happen, bring us some stuff.
I will send some updated proposals.
Perfect.
We'll work with you.
Excellent, thank you. All right, that is going to be so exciting, can't wait to see our little brother.
Mayor, going to give you a quick update, Mr. Georges mentioned the website wasn't working, it also didn't work for me, it also didn't work for Nick, we've already sent in, it, it's not working, okay, the ticket's already been sent in.
Okay.
So.
So when you say the website doesn't work, we, we're on, that, that's the two.
Yes, that's, that's the internet.
You're saying our website's down right now.
Just our website.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So, we're on it.
I'm not sure what we should do, thank God.
Just let you know, if you couldn't log in and your devices were aware, and we sent in the repair ticket already.
Kevin, are you here?
Yeah, we couldn't, a bunch of us couldn't.
Bring it on up, buddy. All right, next on the agenda then, we have a presentation by Mr. McGinnis on the status of 16500, if I may, Kevin, can I ask a question real quick?
Absolutely, yeah.
So, shouldn't, is, well, actually, I'll ask both of you, because I know, I'm asking you from the closed session, and you're, is, is this, do we have anything that we should have probably done in a closed session?
Probably most of this, so I can give kind of a general overview of what's going on, without doing anything that might break any type of attorney-client privilege, because at this point, I would not want to do anything that could affect.
Is that something that should be considered for the next meeting, to schedule, for more?
I, I would probably say so, yes.
What, seriously?
What's that?
Like he disappeared?
He wouldn't.
Like, like magic, like just, okay. When he comes back, can you ask him to make sure that we include on the next agenda, a, for the next council, closed session?
Yeah.
Somebody tell him? But, okay, because I, I was a little wondering.
Yeah, so, what I was going to do is just give kind of a general, kind of what I'll call a big-picture overview, right? We have litigation that's moving forward on this matter. I know there's been a lot of talks and concern about potentially delay on moving this, this case, you know, forward, and things like that. This is stuff I can kind of address in an open session.
Okay.
And so, one of the issues that we kind of faced, kind of as a country, was the whole COVID pandemic, and then since the COVID pandemic, we had a number of various moratoriums that were put in place regarding property, specifically whether it's evictions, whether it's seizing personal property, or seizing real property, and throughout this period of time, it's been.
Even if it's not occupied, we, I didn't know that.
It's been kind of questionable. So there's been lawsuits filed in the city of Detroit, as well as various counties and communities throughout the United States, alleging that cities have improperly seized and demolished property during a violation of the federal moratorium. At this time, we do not have results specifically related to that. However, again, in looking at protecting the interests of the city overall, and the overall risk of moving too fast on something to demolish a piece of property, whereas the risk of, if we demolish a piece of property, while we're not authorized to do so, or potentially violating federal law, the risk is significantly more than any type of reward we would get moving forward. Since the moratorium has ended, we've been able to kind of move forward and continue progress going forward. I can't really get into any specifics of the case right now, only because, again, specifics in an open kind of forum would get into potentially breaching strategy or attorney-client privilege, but I wanted to let, kind of come here, let the council know, let the city know that, again, this is something that we've all taken very serious when it comes to blighted property in the community. I'm a resident of this community, so I look around our neighborhood, I want it to be nice. We've heard comments, I believe, about our tax base versus some of our community neighbors, and so we all. And so we all know that if we live in this city, and so we want it to be that way. But in the same vein, we also want to protect the interests of the city, including every single taxpayer, so it's not open up to additional liability. So things are progressing forward. I just can't get into specifics of it right now.
So August, when you stepped away, we, closed session for the next meeting?
He whispered it in my ear.
Perfect. All right.
Thank God.
Does that sound right, Mr.?
Absolutely.
To be able, okay.
Absolutely, we'll do.
And you, can you actually even be in that closed session?
No, it would be Kevin.
It would be Kevin only, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
Just for whatever that's worth.
Yep.
Does anybody have any questions? Although I might suggest that we keep them very limited. I guess my only question, or to reiterate, make sure you're understanding, is moratoriums are lifted.
Yes.
Can move ahead.
Litigation's already filed moving forward.
Okay. And is there a backlog that we're fighting, too? Because of all the?
Right now, through the courts, there's always, there's a backlog. I mean, it's one of those things where it's, we're dealing with every single case that we have. Certain cases move a little bit faster, specifically when they deal with criminal cases. But when anytime it's coming with any type of civil case, there's a little bit of a backlog. We're fortunate to have a very, a very good, astute, wise judge appointed to this case, without me kind of going into those specific details that I know.
Is he watching? Is that why you want, or she watching?
I don't know if she is, but.
Because you know, you use the.
No, no, I don't. I have a feeling she's probably not. But, but I do feel like, once we get moving, it should hopefully move with the normal pace of kind of cases that we see.
So for the benefit of Ms. Phillips in the back, Ms. Phillips, did you bring anybody else this evening that is also watching? Okay.
Okay.
For the benefit of them, when we say how long moving forward, and now that maybe we've got a little bit of a break in the logjam, could, and I understand that anything, but could you maybe give what is a reasonable estimate range? Let's go with range, so I don't lock you down. I know you attorneys hate to lock into anything.
There's a very specific reason why people don't like attorneys.
You never commit.
Because it's so hard for us to commit to something.
That's why I said range. I'm going with range. Like, you know, don't say 10 years.
That's why. Typically, in a civil case, with the way they normally try to move the dockets, honestly, they're looking at probably within a year from filing. Now, all that depends on a number of factors that can speed it up. So again.
So that house could still?
Potentially, yes.
Okay. And obviously, you're, you're probably giving us worst-case scenario.
I am, that's correct.
Because my gosh, you wouldn't, you know, that you'd want us to be happy when it moves faster.
100%.
Yes. Do we have a, is it, I mean, I know that Ms. Phillips, part of the issue has been maybe not getting out there and clearing up grass and some of the other stuff, do, right?
It's actually been the critters that are living in the house.
Okay. And.
It's a primary issue.
All right. So my question to the city, is there anything that we can do to mitigate that that doesn't interfere with?
Yeah, after the last meeting, I, we did speak, Scott and I did speak, and we also spoke with code enforcement officers to be, you know, to learn into the issues. Obviously, there were.
What can they do? Last time I checked, Barb was not catching raccoons.
Well, we didn't talk about raccoons.
Well, I don't know what critter she's talking about, but.
We, you know, obviously, that, you know, you know, blight is under, you know, is, is, we have the ability to pursue under our nuisances. So code enforcement is aware, they're going to take necessary steps. I think they're, I think it's reasonable to state that perhaps, on account of the litigation that had been ongoing, there may have been a little step back with respect to enforcement of the nuisance. But nonetheless, both those tracks can proceed forward simultaneously.
Okay.
That's correct. Yeah, they'll have no implication or no impact on the actual litigation.
Okay.
Moving forward.
So, and, and the city is, got a plan?
Yes, ma'am.
Got a strategy?
Yes, ma'am.
Kathy, do you have any, I'm, I'm going to ask you, do you have any question? Because he's right here, and, and you, you know, this is your kitty corner from you. And you have to talk to all your neighbors.
Yes. The main concern of the city is keeping it up.
Sure.
But if the main concern is the access that the animals have to the inside of the house, the condition of the inside of the house, once it was flooded, the smell, I mean, it's just, I mean, from my understanding, there's still a pork chop dinner on the table, and it's probably been there for two years now.
Those, the critters didn't eat that, huh? That's not saying much about those pork chops. And I recognize, we, I mean, you know, you're talking ceiling holes, that's beyond, but they're, we're, we're going to do the best, right? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
You guys heard it. He said yes. You can't say yes. I'm, I'm waiting for Cervelo to start nodding.
We can do what we can do. I mean, it's in the courts, and, I mean, we issue misdemeanor ticket.
I don't mean about that.
That gets into courts, and it's just court, 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 so.
Yes.
I don't mean about the court part.
Until we get the final order to, to knock it down, that problem's not going to go away.
How many different nuisances can we issue?
Yeah. Well, not even nuisance, can't we?
Well, I mean, there's a house, right? The, the condition of a house is the condition of the landscape.
Well, it's a nuisance. I mean, they haven't done it, that's not going to do it.
No, I know. I just, is there anything else on top of that? You know, do they?
Like animal control, pest control.
So there, there's obviously, like, you know, the, you know, like, the most awesome power that the city has, or any city would have, would be the ability to prosecute criminally, right? And that's what we're doing. That's, that's the process that we're following. So beyond that, can we elevate that any more than that? No. And obviously, what Kevin is doing, and what we do when we, we pursue demolition, that's also, if you think about it, extreme steps. But of course, there are extreme steps for extreme conditions, and that's, you know, that's certainly called for in this particular situation.
Let me rephrase the question, because I guess I'm not making myself clear. When we have properties that don't mow their lawn, at some point, we send out the city, and then we bill them. And if they don't pay the bill, we then attach it to the property taxes or whatever, and, which would be part of, okay.
That is.
So, I guess what I'm asking is, when it comes to critters, or any of that, is there any action we can take? Call in pest control, the same concept? I'm not expecting our DPW to go out there and catch raccoons. I mean, someone that does that, is there any mitigation, and I don't know enough about critter control, that the city can do, and then charge, you know, attach to the property taxes when this is all settled? That's my question.
We may be limited to just cutting the grass and trimming that, billing it. I'm not sure going.
Okay, that's.
Into.
Okay.
Property and, I think we're crossing the line, is if we enter into someone's residence, even though they're not living there.
I, that's, I'm, fair answer. I just wanted, I'm just asking the question. So Kathy, I guess the answer is, I'm, sorry.
It's the only boarded house in Clausen. That's what the neighbors' app is looking at.
Oh, it's unfortunate. It's, it's a bad situation, but obviously, we're on a delay because of COVID, unfortunately. But moving forward, I mean, there's only so many steps we can take legally as well without getting the city in, in further trouble.
Okay.
This is going on three years, so it's been going on longer than COVID.
We have another one, I think, that's on a seven-year, maybe. Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, and again, we try to move as quick as we can, but I think the taking of any kind of property, demolishing property.
Well, you didn't get this until COVID, after COVID started, so it's not like you started three years ago.
No, I got around that same, no. But, but, but again, the point is, I think, you know, anytime we move forward on these types of cases, myself included, when it comes to every step I take, it's to kind of go above and beyond, because the taking and demolishing of any kind of property is seen as kind of one of the most extreme things you can do. And so we want to make sure everything is done the absolute proper, you know, proper way. And it is frustrating, and I understand the frustration in having to wait on any type of delay, you know? And, and I think, again, when you're dealing with litigation, it's a very difficult, a difficult process when you ask how long something takes. I expect this to move faster than a lot of cases, but it's not uncommon to have other types of litigation take three years, four years, seven years. It all depends on the courts and what they deceive, you know, what they deem to be kind of the most appropriate. The one good thing is, I do think the city has taken a lot of very good proactive steps in this case. And so we've done, I think, as much as we can to kind of help us move this along.
Well, hopefully, our wise, kind, beautiful, lovely judge was filled with wisdom and will, yes. Anybody have any other questions, or no? Thank you, Mr. McGinnis, for coming in.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Anything else?
All right. And we have no public hearings, so we can skip past that. Mr. Betrino, you're up. We are going to have an updated discussion on city manager search.
Thank you very much. I provided a report in your packet dated October 11th. This is the kickoff of your city manager search. I'll go through the items that are in that report. There's no specific approval that I'm looking for this evening. If I receive feedback, I will incorporate it in the position advertisement, and then immediately after this meeting and receiving that feedback, we will begin the advertisement and recruitment process for your permanent city manager. First, I appreciate that we're kicking off now. I understand, and both your interim city manager and others that I've spoke to during stakeholder meetings made it clear that, you know, we're starting this during, under the, the direction of this current elected body. This will continue through with the seating of the next elected body after the November election. The interviews and the rest of the recruitment process will be done with that body. I appreciate both the confidence in this body, and I look forward to working with the next seated city council. The position advertisement that's included is informed by 15 stakeholder meetings that I had with all elected officials and department heads. And I think it, both folks who's focused on the opportunity, but also transparent of the stability that we're seeking for Clausen and its next manager. We look to begin that advertisement on Monday. I would be happy to receive comments today in public, or if you'd like to email me immediately after the meeting by end of day tomorrow, if you had any comments for after reviewing the packet, or receive any public feedback from the public packet that was posted, I'd be happy to receive and incorporate. The next item in your packet is the advertisement plan and budget. In our proposal, we suggested not to exceed $2,500 for the budget for advertising. We've provided you a budget that is just under $2,500, which is our recommendation to make sure that we're reaching a diverse and deep candidate pool. The next item is timeline. We expect that under the launch of now, we will have our first review of candidates at the end of November, and then our interview process would be during the month of December. Depending on holidays, we will schedule special meetings with the elected body to review candidates. Our process, as presented in the proposal that you accepted, would be to present a slate of candidates in closed session, as allowed under open meetings. If we only present their written materials and a verbal presentation from myself, which they would receive in closed session, that allows us to talk about a number of candidates that is larger than those that we would want to present in a public session, the Michigan Open Meetings Law specifically for that purpose. Once the elected body decides on the candidates they'd like to bring forward for public interview, all interviews, of course, are in public session. We would also anticipate engaging citizens, as well as staff in, whether it's the first round of interviews or the second round of interviews that is in public. I think it's expected that you can have your process completed near the end of the year, mid-December to the end of the year. The timeline that I've provided is kind of the, the out, including holidays, but certainly in direction as we get going. If we want to accelerate, we can. The most important part to not accelerate is how many weeks we're out advertising. We really want to be out advertising for at least five weeks. Four-week publication or monthly publication is important to make sure we hit them all. The next item in your report is the compensation range recommendation. You'll note that I surveyed and received information from seven communities that are like Clausen. Both receive their city manager wage, as well as city manager benefits. You'll note that the benefits are not included in this report. That's something that I would share with the elected body. Once a candidate is selected, if the elected body would like to review that in terms of negotiating terms of an employment contract, I would certainly provide it. The range that I'm recommending, based on the seven comparables, is 105,000 to 125,000. I think that that's the appropriate range. The midpoint of that range is 115,000, which is appropriate to go 10,000 in either direction. Actually, I think the midpoint was exactly $114,000 and change. Certainly, I'd be happy to review the rationale under picking those seven comps, provided some rationale in the packet, though, based on budget size, taxable value, and population. The last item that I have in your packet is a sample position description. It's my understanding that there, there may not be a current position description. This is something for informational purposes only. I would hope that as we come into the interview process with the final round of candidates, that by then, I would have worked with the city council to adopt a new position description so that the, the new manager can enter that tenure with a clear position description. Not included in here, but included in my proposal is a facilitation of the employment agreement, so I'm happy to facilitate between the two parties an appropriate employment agreement. My client is the city. I am very transparent with the candidates of that. But I also think that as, as an external observer, I can help facilitate terms that, that may come, be best for both parties. And finally, I know that your performance evaluation was recently updated or recently created. I would strongly suggest that as you bring on a new manager, you, you include that as part of your review. That is not a comment on if your current is good or bad, it's just another opportunity. Position description, employment contract or agreement, and performance evaluation are three things that are much better to have when you, when you hire, rather than, than midterm. I'm happy to answer any questions. I know I went through a lot of data relatively fast, but hopefully, the notes in front of you can help remind you of where we at, are at. I'll just leave with, I'm watching a couple city manager searches right now in our local region, really the tri-county area I'm most familiar with, and they're in process. And so keeping an eye on the, the candidates as they go through, and then I am quick to jump with phone calls as soon as they, as they appoint, because I do think we'll, we'll be sure to put in the effort to make sure that your pool is appropriate for your community.
I have a question.
Yes.
On the physical demands, I'm guessing maybe that's a standard kind of thing, but I guess I'm not sure why, does our city manager actually need to walk? And I'm not joking, there's wheelchairs. Is that a limitation?
I think it should be removed.
Okay. Because I, I actually do.
I actually think several, you're, you're correct. This is a model that I, that I've used, and I think several of those probably could be removed under the, the physical demands, including the lifting and the vision.
Okay. Because I, I mean, I, I would guess, wouldn't it, also, I'm not sure about the stooping and the crawling either, but accommodation, I guess, isn't there normally, you know?
Yeah.
With reasonable accommodation, isn't that?
In time, probably in the last couple of years, the more narrow you can make in physical demands, the more appropriate. So I think that's an excellent question, and I think you could reduce those as narrowly as possible.
I would just leave it up to your discretion to maybe make that a little bit more-
It shall be narrowed.
Friendly to differently abled people.
Thank you.
So my question is in regard to, I see you're advertising in Wisconsin and Illinois and Ohio. And I, I get that we need to cast a really wide net, but as part of your discussion, the fact that we're not paying relocation costs for these people?
I'm not under the understanding whether you are or are not paying relocation costs. If you're conferring to me now that as a, as a body, you will not pay relocation costs, certainly that's good for me to know. Usually, that is something that is discussed as you narrow down your candidate pool. Those advertisements, particularly Illinois, they're not terribly expensive, and especially in the Chicago area, we find candidates that want to come home, and moving costs can be negotiated then and aren't necessarily an expectation from candidates.
Historically, we have said that we were not doing that. Of course, it would be up to the discretion of the newly-elected body what they're going to want to do, but I think that, you know, I know we spend money willy-nilly here, but, you know, there is, we have limited resources, and so I think that that's something that needs to be very, you know, carefully considered.
I appreciate that.
I kind of disagree with that.
Of course you do.
I think we have to leave all options open, okay? Because if we're looking for a person that can handle our business, and he happens to come from California, we're not going to tell him, we're not going to pay the way if he, if he has the experience and the know-how, okay? Because what we're looking for is a person that's going to take care of our city and help it grow, and take it out of the kind of the mess that it's in right now.
But what you said was negotiate with the next.
Sure.
I mean, the next city council, which I think is absolutely appropriate and-
Right. As you narrow your candidate pool, she or he will have different things that they expect, and the elected body will have different things that they expect, and I'd hope to bridge those relatively eloquently. There's a lot of expectations from both parties early on. We hope we find a good candidate that, that we can work through that.
So I don't think anybody, we're saying, no, we're not saying that. We're saying leave that to the future negotiations as part of the whole, yes.
Thank you.
No?
No, I'm just curious about the current status of candidates. You mentioned already, there are some communities that are also looking. Does that change over the course of the holidays, or is there a timeframe that is better suited than others in looking?
The best time to start looking is as soon as you need one.
Sure, yes, sure.
The, I, we see a lot of movement in city management in the May-June-July time period. That's when we see a lot of openings, that's when we see a lot of movement. It makes a lot of sense. In Michigan, we have a July 1 budget cycle, and so often it's that period that, particularly if there, it's a planned event, that's when it, it could happen. I, I don't think there's a better or worse between October, November, December, January. I think this is a fine time to do it. I think right now, I know of the searches that are happening now in the middle of, we will jump ahead of any that would happen tomorrow in terms of, of our process. I do think it's extremely wise of this board to have deferred all the interviews until after. I know there's been a period of wait, and, and you approve this now, and let that next body make the hire. I don't have any concern with your timeline. I do think it's to your benefit that a couple of these searches are winding up now, that, that at least I know there's interested candidates that want to make a, a movement that I can tap to see if this is a community that they, that they desire.
And so for those candidates, they could potentially still hold out for whatever we decide in our timeframe for what's appropriate for us to hire the next city manager?
That's a great question. Some of them will, others will continue to pursue, but it's, there's nothing that you can do, I don't think, to sway that better or in your favor.
Don't have any questions?
So I think if I heard you correctly, you invited council to send feedback by close of business tomorrow?
That would be excellent.
If anybody had anything?
Yeah, and if anyone in the public that reads the packet and has any feedback, I'd be happy to receive that as well.
I think you just got mine, so I won't.
Yeah, my, my email is on the, on the letterhead, so please feel free to communicate. I, I really did appreciate talking with each of you as stakeholders. It did help inform me on, you know, my Gov HR is located in Chicago, but I'm in Rochester, and you may think you know another community just because you live 25 minutes away, but those stakeholder interviews for staff and, and electeds is so important to our process because it, making those assumptions of what I think I know aren't, is not the best way to do this. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, then, moving on. Next on the agenda, we have consideration of approving the budget amendment number one to adjust revenues and appropriations of the general fund, 101 ARPA Fund 276, and Water Superfund 592. Actually, I would like to make a motion, I would like to make a motion for a vote of no confidence on the last year's completed budget ending 6/30/2021, and the projected budget beginning 7/1/2021. That's my motion.
I'll second it.
Any questions, discussion? That's your, the budget that we all voted on and approved, that's what you're?
The budget that, there was an agreement that it would be corrected and brought back in a more appropriate and proper format.
Was that agreement in open session? I don't recall it.
That was a conversation that Mr. Nushai asked me to have. No other council members, so that's not.
There was a motion to have a new budget by August 13th, but-
There was.
Because of changes, we, we gave him a couple extra weeks, it's been 60 days, we still don't have it.
There was. Nothing? George?
I second it, so.
Okay, well, you get to comment if you want.
No. Second was my comment.
Okay. Then roll call vote?
Mayor Scripture?
Yes.
Councilman Shepherd?
Yes.
Councilmember Georges?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
No.
Mayor Protam Sampson?
Yes.
I think I'd like, we need the right numbers.
Good, Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we bring in a financial analyst slash accountant to oversee the finance department for the next few months.
I actually believe that by approving the, Mr. Kazar's present, proposal, I actually believe that we will get some of the results that we need.
But it seems like a longer process. We need somebody in here now to oversee it and get to, get to your budget out that we need.
Actually, unfairly, I'm discussing before a second, sorry.
I'll second that.
Now, okay, go ahead.
It's, we need the results now, we don't need results in two or three months. We need some type of a budget that we can shoot for.
But how would we get someone any faster?
Well, I think that would be up to the administration to try to figure out how fast we can get.
Mr. Nushai, is that a hiring decision that's under the purview of the city manager and not the council?
I would agree.
Thank you.
Did you hear it?
Hmm.
That's what Mayor Moffett said.
No.
It's a hiring decision that's under the purview of the city manager and not the council?
Well, not get a job done ain't working.
It's still not under the purview of the city council.
I, I think that, what I think, what we've done by doing the vote of no confidence is send a message loud and clear to the administration that there needs to be some changes in action. So why don't we give it a chance? But you made a motion? That's my opinion, that's my part of the discussion.
I'll, I'll pull it back.
No, we, I mean, yes or no? I, I, you made a motion, you seconded. I'm not, I'm just giving you my opinion.
I just want to see something get done. I mean, we've been asking and asking, she hasn't sent it back to us.
I, I agree, that's why I made what I agree.
So with the hiring of Mr. Kazar, and, and the cost was around 47,000 on the high end, and, and the conversation we had with Ms. Rau and, and Mayor and Mr. Kazar in the beginning prior to coming in, I would say his company working with Ms. Rau and the policies start lining things up, is that what the council was looking for? Looking for low guidance on the fact that we are bringing him in?
I think we go back to that motion that we made to have that budget by the 13th of August. It expels out what we wanted. Have that done by next council meeting, so that at least we, the new council can start with a budget that they trust.
You can go all the way back to the workshops and everything on the budget. We've asked over and over, been very specific. I'm not going to go back and watch the meetings and rewrite lists that I've already done, and we've already passed motions, like Mayor Protam just stated, it's just not being done.
It's falling on deaf ears.
And we need good numbers, and we're not getting them. This was not what we asked for. And for the record, I would not even talk about the FTE because it is 100% wrong. So I would-
Okay.
I think we need to get somebody-
Do you want to pull a motion, or are you going to want me to roll call?
To change the motion, I have it done by next week.
I understand, but-
We're going nowhere. We, we keep asking and nothing happens, and all we get is attitude, nothing else.
I understand. I think that's what the vote of no confidence was.
Okay. Would you like to pull it? Okay, we'll pull it.
Okay.
We, we need some kind of action.
I, you know, I think as far as what Mr. Kazar said, and one of the things that we were looking for was the detail, right? And that's what I heard from him, right? And what he could, you know, obviously, there'd be input from, from the city on what that would be, but it would be something that would be able to be provided as a useful tool.
But without an overseer, we can't get the answers ourselves. Do we really expect the finance director to give him what he needs unless it's being overseen by somebody?
Unfortunately, that would be the administration to, yes. I think we've sent our-
We pulled it off, so let's quit talking about it.
Then next on the agenda is consideration of approving the contract with Foster and Foster actuaries and consultants in the amount of 10,600 to complete the OPEB valuation required for the audit.
So you're just, you're skipping B then?
Yes, my, my, my motion replaced that.
Replaced it, okay, because it was, just wanted to make sure.
Yes. So I need a motion for the Foster and, my heck. I'm going to go ahead and move to approve the contract with Foster and Foster actuaries and consultants to complete the OPEB valuation required for the audit.
I'll support that.
And Foster and Foster is the one we've used before? Same actuary?
We've used them before, different name, right? Same company, they switch names or, or combined with another company, but it is, Ms. Ralph said it is the same.
I just remember Rena, the former auditor, had, and she never actually was specific, but she said something about not liking something she saw, and talking, she and Mike had a conversation about potentially looking for different actuaries. But obviously, we need this for the audit, so we'll just leave it as it is. I don't, I really don't know what, what her, I just remember she said it. But someone can remind someone of that in the future. So any questions on the OPEB? I know we need it for the audit, and it's a two-year, it's every two years, so this is the year it's due. No? Roll call.
Councilwoman Shepherd?
Yes.
Councilmember Georges?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Sampson?
Yes.
Mayor Scripture?
Yes.
All right. Then next on the agenda, we have consideration of approving the contract with BSNA software and the amount of 5,540 for the first year and annually after the first year of 860 to set up electronic invoice approvals for department heads or assigned personnel. If somebody wants to make that motion, can I ask any questions about that? Are you just going to make me make motions on that?
Mayor, I move to approve the contract with BSNA software and the amount of $5,540 for the first year with setup and annually after the first year of $860.
I'll second that.
All right. I'm guessing that has something to do with, so everybody's not handwriting? That's what you guys do right now, right?
Correct.
And you kind of, and this would go in the system and electronically, that would be able to be approved and no more?
Yeah. It's in a test mode right now that they're working through it, Ms. Rau, and Nick's one of the, the reviewers in the test mode, just gets us on board.
Just out of curiosity, is it, does it, is it part of it putting the, any receipts or anything in there for the permanent record? Is that also, I mean, if you're approving it, is that also the?
Everything is, go ahead.
It would provide an audit of any of the approvers in which invoices.
Perfect, okay. Any other? Better internal control, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Okay. No? No? Roll call.
Councilmember Georges?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Sampson?
Yes.
Mayor Scripture?
Yes.
Councilwoman Shepherd?
Yes.
Passes.
All right. Is this for the planners? Okay. Then next on the agenda, we have consideration of the introduction and for, actually, because I have a question on this. First reading of an ordinance to amend the City of Clausen zoning ordinance, well, actually, before I do this, do we always, I thought we usually put the definition in the ordinance. This, this is two ordinances with the definition outside.
Yeah, it's just how, we did it on the kind of the amendment, because it's an amendment.
Okay.
So we spoke about this.
That's fine, I just want to make sure, because we don't-
Correct.
It's not inconsistent, even though it looks like it is.
Correct.
It's not, okay, thank you. All right, in that case, consideration, I'm just going to move it. I move that the ordinance to amend the City of Clausen zoning ordinance, Division 1, Section 34-481, to add definitions for cannabis facilities be introduced and entered into first reading.
Second.
Thank you. Present.
Thank you. Right, so as you implied, I'll be looking at items E and F. I'm just going to explain them both together because they're all related. So what you're looking at is a cannabis-related amendment to the zoning ordinance. However, I just want to be very clear for the benefit of everybody that it is not anything to do with the two ballot items that are coming up. This is a separate issue. It's governed by a different state statute. So the issue is medical marijuana primary caregivers, and the planning commission has forwarded these, this amendment to you.
Can you explain what a cannabis primary caregiver is, just?
Yes, so under the, in 2008, the people of Michigan passed a referendum that legalized medical marijuana and initiated law, one of 2008, established a system whereby a person who is called a medical marijuana primary caregiver is authorized to grow up to 12 plants per patient, and they can serve a maximum of five patients. So they get-
Where, where do they grow it?
In their house, generally speaking, yes. So they get registered through the state, and we have to permit them to operate somewhere in the city. The, the law is very clear on that. Until recently, it was not clear how much power we had to, to zone the use. That was just made much clearer on a case called Druider versus Township of Byron in 2020, which found that the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act, which is the 2008 law, doesn't nullify a municipality's authority to regulate land use under the Zoning Enabling Act so long as the community does not prohibit marijuana cultivation by a registered primary caregiver, and as long as the community doesn't impose restrictions inconsistent with the regulations established by state law. So in that case, applies to primary caregivers. So that dispelled some of that uncertainty. And I guess what we have is, I'll kind of focus on the portion of the memo that talks about what prompted this amendment. So we, we've kind of had this, this issue lying in the background. We never did anything with it in our zoning ordinance when the law was first passed. And what we have is, is kind of a situation where we've got a number of these operating in houses in the community, but we don't know necessarily how many or necessarily where. The effects of primary caregiver operations in residential neighborhoods can be negative under certain circumstances. They can cause brownouts, and for instance, that's been documented around the state by excessive electricity use. There can be odor issues. In the instance of properties that are held solely for the purpose of conducting a caregiver operation and that are not lived in by the caregiver, the use can lead to property neglect.
But is that, that wouldn't be a resident, that would be a business, they'd have, you can't.
It's, it's done, in fact, I know someone who it's done across the street from, not in this city, but in another city.
So you can actually just buy a house and not live in it and just grow, okay?
It's, yes, it's, there are many, many instances.
I'm learning, thank you.
It's surprising, but yes. There also is a, a risk of fire and black mold damage for individual dwelling units. The fire comes primarily if your wiring's not done correctly because there tends to be high electricity use on these sites.
Can Noben Tube even do that?
What's that?
Or is it Noben?
Noben Tube.
Noben Tube, can Noben Tube even handle it?
I, I think that's where some of the brownout issues come in, actually. There has been, particularly in rural townships, but also in some of the cities in the area, there has been a lot of issues with people requesting electrical services for single-family homes that are far, far in excess of the typical amperage for residential service, and DTE has actually clamped down on that recently because it's messing with their grid. So when we look at, we have kind of some, some things to consider. When we look at caregivers in neighborhoods, we have the, the things I just talked about. And then when we look at caregivers in non-residential districts, we talk about locating caregivers entirely in non-residential districts can relieve some of the issues the use can cause in a neighborhood, but it does lead to some other considerations. So for instance, commercial industrial property does tend to be more expensive, tends to have a higher taxable value, meaning that single caregivers, you know, may not be able to necessarily maintain a property or obtain and maintain a property on their own. To deal with that, caregivers might group together to establish multiple operations in one place, or a caregiver might, might establish a condominium, or a property owner might establish kind of a condominium in which spaces are rented out to caregivers. And then you also have the issue of onsite distribution. So in the absence of local regulation, caregivers can distribute their product. of a condominium in which spaces are rented out to caregivers. And then you also have the issue of onsite distribution. So in the absence of local regulation, caregivers can distribute their product to the registered patients onsite.
Meaning the patients can come to the house and pick their stuff up?
Yeah, they come to the house, exactly, and pick their stuff up, yep. So and the, the kind of condo of caregivers is something that happens around the state now, you know? It could happen, it could be done here, because we don't have anything controlling that. So when we go to the ordinance, the amendment that's in front of you, we have, they're separated, but the first one deals with definitions, and it defines cannabis facilities, cannabis, also known as marijuana with an H or marijuana with a J, marijuana with an H is the annoying spelling that the state legislature chose a long time ago. Caregiver facility, medical use comic cannabis, primary caregiver and qualifying patient. And these definitions are drawn from the statute, they're really not different from what's in state law. And then when we look at the rest, the, the other portion of it, what we have is, we have a section that, or two sections that show which districts we're going to be permitting it in, that's the I-1 and the BRD-2. And then from there, we have an intent statement, and that just basically says why we're doing this.
You said it is in a residence, right? Or it can be, residence?
Yeah, it can be, it could be kind of in any building right now.
Right, but I'm asking, so if it's in a residence, seriously, one could not be a primary caregiver, or have be growing in their home, probably maybe not all 72, that they're allowed to, and not sit down and have a glass of wine?
Well, you could certainly consume wine on your own premises.
Well, because this says, no, that's not what this says. No alcohol beverage shall be consumed on the premises of a primary caregiver facility.
Oh, are you talking about what's, what's in this?
Yeah, yeah. You said do all of them.
Well, they're not, they're not going to be, they're not going to be at their house now, because we're moving it to these other districts. So we're moving it to BRD-1, and we're moving it to I-1.
But just that, so you're saying in those, those type of things, but that's not state for law, right?
No.
Okay, okay. You're only putting that in there because you're moving it out of a resident, okay.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, so, so, yeah.
That's a little odd.
Yeah, you're not going to have, you're not going to have the kitchen situation anymore.
Yeah, okay, gotcha, all right.
Right, yeah, you can do whatever you want in your house. So the ord, the, the next section basically says the ordinance has no effect on patient use. So patients who are, you know, qualifying under state law, they can use the product as state law intends. Our next section is kind of another caveat. It says that there's no defense against criminal prosecution. Obviously, there's still federal statutes that are, you know, in opposition to the state law, but, but the city is not liable for anything that it regulates in accordance with state law. So then we get into the standards. So we have an applicability portion, we have compliance with state laws and rules, so you have to be complying with the rules of the MMA, or the, the standards of the MMA and the administrative rules that are propagated by LARA to, to administer that law. We have a minimum floor area standard for each caregiver facility, and that's based on some research that we've done into how much floor area you actually need to grow the, the plants. And then we're, we have a maximum aggregation of three primary caregiver facilities per And then from there, we're talking, we have a section on secure facilities, and, you know, basically what we're saying is that it's got to be a secure facility, that it's in compliance with the MMMA. And the MMMA has standards, or LARA has propagated rules for what constitutes a secure facility. There's some appearance standards in there, you know, we don't want people putting bars on the windows and making it look, you know, like a fortress or something. But we do have some, some kind of wiggle room in there for the Planning Commission to approve security features, as long as they're actually, you know, in keeping with the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We have a section on odor, because that is one of the primary externalities of the use, so we want to have a trigger for enforcement there. We've got the distribution onsite prohibited. Now that, now that you're not doing it out of a house, it, and you're, and you're aggregating perhaps more than one caregiver in a pla, in, in one place, the distribution onsite is, is not something that we're looking for.
Wait, so that means they can't come pick up, what does that mean?
Basically, you'd be taking the product to your patients instead of them coming to you.
So there, there wouldn't be any parking needs?
Right, yeah, exactly. There's no, there's no extra parking. The other thing about the facilities is that when you've got this facilities in a, like a more industrial-type setting, strictly speaking, the only person who's supposed to be in the facility is the caregiver. So if you have onsite distribution, and you've got your locked facilities inside, you're more likely to have a scenario where state law is being violated by someone coming into the facility, whereas your locked facility might be a portion of your house now, and the person can come into the rest of your house, you know? So there's a, there's an issue there too, that we're trying to avoid. And then we're not permitting use or consumption on the site. There's the alcohol one that you already mentioned.
I thought it was still a residence, I'm like, that just doesn't, right, okay, got it.
Not permitting identifying signage, and that's also, that is kind of a security thing in itself. And then requiring all your permits, if you're doing, you know, electrical, plumbing, mechanical, et cetera, obviously, you have to come get your permits. Inspection occurs, just like it would with any other permit. We have a little section on nuisances, which is, kind of points you toward other parts of our zoning ordinance that deal with enforcement on nuisances. If, if you're currently a registered primary caregiver and you're operating out of your house, you will become a non-conforming use, if, if this is adopted. So we're noting here that those uses can continue as non-conforming uses, because that's how our zoning ordinance treats all uses. And ultimately, if that use ceases, then of course, the non-conforming use is no longer available on that property. But if someone's doing it right now, you know, they should know that we're not shutting them down, they're able to continue doing this, you just can't establish a new one in a residence. And then, and of course, that's if you were, if you, if you lawfully established your operation too. If you, if you weren't operating within the bounds of state law, then there's still an issue.
Does that apply to nuisances as well? Do the nuisances compound for those, for those that are existing?
Well, if there's a nuisance issue that we're dealing with on the property, we would continue to deal with that, you know, in the normal, I don't, the nonconformity wouldn't go away, the nonconforming use wouldn't go away just because of a nuisance complaint necessarily.
They just have to.
They have to resolve the nuisance.
Do, taking aside the things you couldn't do in a residence, I mean, so do the nuisance abatement or whatever avoidance provisions, like smell, do they apply to?
Yeah.
So they're allowed to continue, nonconforming use, continue, but they still do have some of those stand, they have to, okay.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, they, they kind, really, we're telling them they have to meet the standards that everybody else has to meet.
Sure, sure.
You know? And then we've got some application requirements in there as well. And there is also a parking requirement, and it basically, it's two spaces per, per operation. And there's probably only going to be one person onsite per operation, but you may have an, you know, some other need for a car to be there or something.
Sure, because when someone, when the inspector comes, they want to park.
Right, exactly, so, that kind of thing. So, so we're requiring two spaces, just to make sure that we're, we got our bases covered, basically.
So I have a question, and it's just because I'm not fluent in primary caregiver. I understand what the law says about they can have up to 72?
Mm-hmm.
And are you saying that the law doesn't permit us to say, sure, you can be a primary caregiver, but now you're limited to no more than five plants and one client type of thing?
Yeah, we can't do that, because if, if they've got 72 plants and they've got themselves and five patients, they're going to be operating in accordance with state law. And if they're operating in accordance with state law, we can't prohibit them.
So that's the reason, so we, we can't find that happy medium ground where we say, sure, it's, you know, one resident, five plants, and one person that you're caregiving. We can't do that.
Right, exactly.
Okay, all right, okay. Is that it on?
That's my summary.
End of files?
Any questions or anything? I'm happy.
And just to remind, this has already been vetted through planning. I know they had several meetings on it, and this is what they are passing up to council for approval. Any other questions?
No.
Well, we got two motions, so why don't we go ahead and roll call the first one, and we'll just, because they're, we're basically, right, we're done, both of them are in.
Yeah, yep.
Go ahead.
Kelsey Moffett, oh, sorry. Kelsey Moffett, yes.
Yes.
Mayor Portem Sampson?
Yes.
Mayor Scripture?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepard?
Yes.
Councilmember Georges?
Yes.
And then we're going to go to F.
Okay, and I'm just going to read it, make the motion, and we can go ahead and vote. So I make a motion that we, let's see, ordinance to amend the City of Claussen zoning ordinance, Divisions 15 and 27, to add registered primary caregiver facilities as permitted uses to Division 20, to add parking standards for registered primary caregivers, and to Division 21, to add specific standards for registered primary caregivers be introduced and entered into the first reading.
Second.
All right, we've already asked, discussed, and talked. Go ahead, roll call.
I do have a question. Are we setting this public hearing for that November 3 meeting, or the next meeting in Normally, we do it the next meeting, that's the day after the election.
Make it for a third.
So keep that, okay. You have the right to decide.
Unless somebody is, I mean, I don't care.
Okay, I'm just, just asking, because I usually put that in there for, for this meeting.
Okay.
Election day's not a long day for us, just, just you.
Just, just me, yeah.
We're all, we're all, what, what?
Figured that out, huh? That's why I was asking.
Delegate someone to, you know?
We're all, my whole class, or my whole office is there.
Yeah, right, gosh, okay, yeah, I got nothing.
We're all hands on deck.
I got nothing.
All right, then we'll just go through it.
Okay, all right.
Mayor Portem Sampson?
Yes.
Mayor Scripture?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepard?
Yes.
Councilmember Georges?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Can't say I didn't try.
Admirable, thank you.
I'll be cranky.
Are you going to just go to the next one now?
I'm actually going to pass the baton to my colleague Jill.
Where, where is it?
It's invisible.
Oh, you mean the metaphor, the metaphorical baton?
The baton.
All right.
Good evening.
Hi, Jill.
Nice to see everybody tonight, and it's nice to be here in person. I think, I feel like I have to say that every time I go to any meeting in person these days. This item on your agenda is the draft master plan that the Planning Commission has been working on since the beginning of the year, actually, a little bit at the end of last year. This is a master plan amendment to your 2018 city master plan. This section focuses on specifically the school sites that were discussed at the beginning of the year and listed by City of Claussen, or not City of Claussen, Claussen Public Schools, as part of their efforts to have, they had a bond proposal, but their initiative to consolidate, to reconfigure their campuses, and to move forward into the next, educating the next generation of kids in the city. The Planning Commission recognized that, and, and council as well, that the current master plan, the 2018 master plan, didn't really address what might happen to not just school facility sites, but other institutional or non-residential uses in the residential districts. And so we thought this was a really good opportunity to kind of get ahead of that. And we know that there have been issues in the past, one particular big issue in the past, with some redevelopment that was proposed, that really was not anticipated by the community, and we wanted to try and get ahead of that and be a little bit more proactive. So the Planning Commission studied the site, they have the two sites, but also with an eye to thinking about what hap, might happen to other institutional sites in this, in the city over time. So the master plan, we went through the process of collecting data, existing conditions data. We looked a little bit from the schools. We've had some public input, we had a couple of focus group with local realtors, which was really interesting, and then made a couple of recommendations that the Planning Commission's been discussing. In the master plan itself, the future land use map, and I should back up to, to explain the difference between the master plan and the zoning ordinance, I like to do that any chance that I have. As you know, the master plan is the community's long-range vision for the future. It guides us in our policy decisions, it guides you in your policy decisions, over a 10, 15, 20-year time period. It is intended to be general and flexible in its nature, but still giving that guidance for future decisions. The zoning ordinance is based on the master plan, and it has a rule of law. So this master plan doesn't change anything about the ways in which anybody can currently use the property today, but it sets the stage for the Planning Commission and City Council to continue working and to continue making the zoning ordinance relevant and flexible as it relates to the goals and objectives in the master plan. So what the master plan does is does not change the future land use map itself, but rather adds some language into the description of the single-family land use category and the multiple-family land use category. And these additions are intended to provide a little bit more flexibility when we think about redevelopment concepts. And you see the redevelopment concepts included around page 31. And we included a couple of different redevelopment concepts, just as food for thought for envisioning redevelopment and what might happen, and ways in which the, the Planning Commission and City Council may want to address changes in the zoning ordinance in the future, recognizing the challenges of redeveloping any parcels, especially ones that are currently in use or maybe ceasing to be in use, but certainly having been developed. And so that's what's presented in this master plan document. Along with those changes and the redevelopment concepts, there are some implementation strategies that relate to zoning changes that the Planning Commission may wish to discuss next year going forward. So the action that we're asking for tonight as part of the master plan process, it's required by state law, is for City Council to authorize staff to distribute the master plan draft in its form to the reviewing agencies as required by state law and the neighboring communities. This doesn't imply any kind of approval at this point, this is really to get the ball to the next level. Once we have the 42-day review period, it'll come back to the Planning Commission, where they'll hold a public hearing, and then they'll take action on the master plan, and then we'll bring it back to council for council's action on the master plan. We think it's good practice, even though technically, the, the approval tends to rest with the Planning Commission. Commission or City Council always has the ability to assert its right to approve the document as well, but we think that's just good practice so that everybody's on the same page going forward. So that's just the general overview, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Somebody want to make a motion, so we can? Oh my gosh.
Yeah, hold on a second.
I move to authorize staff to distribute the master plan to surrounding communities for the required review period of 42 days.
Second.
Second, all right, got it.
Anybody question, discussion? I think we're all, you did such a thorough job. All right, roll call that.
Mayor Scripture?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepard?
Yes.
Councilmember Georges?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Sampson?
Yes.
We shall distribute.
We shall.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, then, next on the agenda, we have consideration of establishing a public hearing to solicit public comments on program year 2022, Community Development Block Grant Application. They're recommending November 3, and I believe, actually, I'm going to make the motion, Nick. So I move to establish a public hearing to solicit, wait, seriously? I move to establish a public hearing to solicit public hearing comments, to solicit comments on the program year 2022 Community Development Block Grant Application for Wednesday, November 3, 2021. Second.
Second.
Thank you. Nick, come on.
I'm on the spot, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Council. All we're asking you guys to do right now is just to set a public hearing for that Wednesday to discuss how we will use the Community Development Block Grant Funds for this year. We used last year's number as a guideline for this year, so we're looking to discuss how we will use the Community Development Block Grant Funds for this year. We used last year's number as a guideline for this year, so we're looking at, again, about $35,000. So for that public hearing, we'll have a couple days' notice of some potential projects we'll be wanting to use that money for, so.
So the public will know what they have to options.
Exactly, and if there's any questions right now, you guys can ask them.
Stay. Anything else?
No.
Roll call that, don't go.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Councilmember Georges?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Sampson?
Yes.
Mayor Scripture?
Yes.
So that was the last item, new business. I'm gonna ask if there's any other new business, but I'm just gonna jump in, because I made you stay, and I have a new business that I wanna, for you, so you're there. So, if I understand correctly, you were working a little bit ago with the website developer, and you have some very good ideas on our website? You wanted to move ahead with fixing some of the god-awful problems?
That is correct. We as a city did meet with Revise and talk about some changes we can make, as we've seen other cities move in a more modern platform, and I know I've noticed, citizens have noticed that it's awfully clunky to find information sometimes, so just trying to look towards the future.
So this Revise is pretty good, they can modernize our?
Absolutely, and he showed me some examples of what we can do, but as, you know, the last couple months have gone the way they have, kind of put it on the back burner, so we can gear this up whenever, as a potential project.
So I?
Looks like you're gonna make a motion.
Actually, what I was gonna say is I had been thinking about making a motion, because the website is awful, and we'd talked, but maybe it's time to officially say, to put out an RFP, but after chatting with you earlier and realizing that you'd already invested time and energy into this, and I can't direct staff time, so I was actually gonna not make that motion for an RFP, but I was gonna ask if we've authorized Nick to just, if you or somebody has authorized Nick to go ahead and make some progress and come back with a recommendation to the next council on, what would that include? Maybe some of the costs for revised, is that what they're called, revised?
Yeah.
To update it, and is there anything in there that would give us an example of what you're maybe?
Absolutely, and I can bring some examples, and they might even have a presentation for you.
Would you be comfortable doing that?
Absolutely.
Chief Sarbella, would you be comfortable with Nick taking that initiative?
Yeah, we've had that discussion. I was involved in the initial when they were talking about redoing the website, but obviously we talk multiple times a day, and he's done different things, and he really wants to make things look a little bit better, and I have no problem giving Nick the green light to work on those issues.
So how long do you think till you might come back with something like that?
Sometime in November, likely.
I mean, the first meeting's pretty slammed, so probably November, December, yeah, give it a little bit, let them.
Thanks.
November, December.
My question, go ahead, Lou, because I'll wait. Go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, since he's doing the website, how about adding a kiosk to this website, and make all the software work together? This would be a great thing.
So what you're asking to do is ask about that?
Ask about the?
Bring that back.
Kiosk, a couple kiosks and?
That integrates, I think, the same.
Integrate it right into the website, so people can come out here and use it, and we give them a friendlier, faster service out here.
Yeah, we can definitely ask about that and see how their software works with some other potential vendors.
So I'm not gonna make a motion, because obviously that would be, but I think we're all appreciating that you took that initiative, and you're willing to rep, finish that up, and it looks like we have somewhat of a timeline, and my question is, could we at least put that on our, just follow-up, under the city manager's thing?
Website redevelopment and payment kiosks? Or is it just?
Well, he's just, actually, yeah, a presentation, or he's gonna research and come back with, you know, ideas, presentation, costs for the next council. Yes, that's all, right?
Correct, and I did ask what the tentative cost would be in that meeting, and said max $10,000 for the total restructure and all the content carrying over.
But you didn't get that part yet, so. All right, then that's, that was, sorry, that's why, because I was gonna make that motion, but now I know that you got that covered, and I'm not going to, unless, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For doing that, and being on top of that, I appreciate it. All right, now I'm gonna ask, because I went and hogged that. Does anybody else have any new business?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion.
Please. Where are you going? Mr. Newshire, word? You always yell at him.
I do. He never listens. This is one that you're gonna read, I presume, correct?
Okay.
He will read it out, you know, for bait.
I went to daddy for that one. Daddy, can he do that? Is it okay? And now you're gonna read it.
Yes, I will.
All right, so everybody sees what we got, great.
Wait for words.
All right, are you about to make a motion now? Is this your motion?
Yes.
Oh.
This is the motion.
I've had it. That's a long motion.
Yes, it is.
It's clear.
Yes, okay. I wanna make a motion to authorize the following concerning the city manager's purchasing authority pursuant to section fourteen point oh-five of the charter. This is the purchasing authority of the city manager. A, purchases less than $1,000. The city manager, if appropriations are approved by the city council in the annual budget, is authorized to make the purchases and contracts in an amount not to exceed $1,000 without further approval of city council. Such purchases or contracts shall be made utilizing the most practical and reasonable procurement method that maximizes the city's purchasing power. At no time can the city manager take a project, break down the cost, and down to achieve the authority of a lesser dollar spending. B, purchases between $1,000 and $25,000. The city manager, if appropriations are approved by the city council in the annual budget, is authorized to make the purchase and contracts in the amount estimated to exceed $2,000, but not to exceed $25,000, without further approval of city council. Such purchases or contracts shall require the solicitation of price quotations from at least three sources. This provision shall not apply to purchases or contracts where quotations are impractical. Such purchases or contracts shall contain appropriate documentation. C, purchases exceeding $25,000. Formal competition required. Purchases or contracts estimated to exceed $25,000 shall require formal competition as deemed appropriate, including but not limited to competitive sealed bids, requests for proposals, quality-based selection, negotiated purchase, et cetera. The award shall be made by the city council. Change orders. Change orders to contracts authorized by the city council, including construction contracts, shall be authorized without further city council approval, if there are funds budgeted to cover the change order, and provide that the change order does not alter the scope of the original contract, and provide the amount of the change order does not exceed 10% of the original contract amount.
Does someone wanna make a second? Because that was his motion.
I'll support that.
All right, you've been Googling, you've been Googling there, Councilmember Georges?
Yes.
Nice job.
Actually, it was a nice job. Any questions, any comments, any, anything?
I would like Renes's opinion on this.
I think it is, I think, I think it is appropriate, obviously, you know, council, we, council has authority under the charter to be able to move and define the authority pursuant to the limitations that we have in the charter. Ordinarily, obviously, our motions are more, you know, are narrower, and this is more closer to the ordinance, but certainly council would have the authority to be able to do so. And I think, you know, from my glance of it, obviously meets with our thresholds that we have in place. He's done a step up with respect to authorities, granted more authority to the city manager to be able to accomplish some purchases that currently would not be able to do so without coming to council every time, and then basically it's a restatement of otherwise, you know, as far as the third component of it, it's a restatement of current process. So I think in that regard, I think it's appropriate.
This, Renes, is qualified as a policy or ordinance?
Well, this is a resolution.
Resolution.
So how does it get, so it'd be a fall under policy then?
Financial policy.
Okay.
One of the, yeah.
Mostly, sometimes it's a purchasing ordinance, just trying to see where it fits in to the?
I mean, I don't think so, that's not what we were, no.
I think going forward, probably, you know, if this passes, and this is the will of council, we'll prepare, probably makes sense to bring forth an ordinance to council to be able to, to formalize this process. But in the meantime, I presume the vote will guide us.
But if you do an ordinance, that's much more difficult for a future council, as they're looking at, oh, I don't know, let's say we have massive inflation, and this is silly, so I mean, I guess I'm just, why would we do by ordinance and not resolution?
Because charter does state that council moves by resolution or ordinance.
Right, I just said resolution.
With respect to purchasing authority, so fourteen oh-five talks about ordinance.
Oh, so it requires an ordinance?
Yeah.
Then why have we not had?
It's fourteen oh-three speaks about resolution, council moving by resolution, saying that in the meantime, I presume Mr. Georges is trying to deal with this interim period before?
As a resolution?
Yeah.
Okay.
By way of resolution.
All right. Anything else?
No. Nice job.
Roll call.
Councilmember Georges, do I ask? Yes. Councilmember Moffett?
That would be funny.
Mayor Portem Sampson?
Yes.
Mayor Scripture?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Is there anything else, Mr. Georges, or?
Come on in.
We don't see a lot of paper there.
Well, no, because I'm gonna go around, and if you have anything else, now?
Are we down to the?
We're under new business still, I'm asking.
No, no, it's under business.
Okay.
It's council town.
That was it, okay, all right. Councilmember Shepherd?
No, new business.
Councilmember Moffett?
No, new business, no.
Mayor Portem?
I have a motion. I attended the Ethics Committee meeting yesterday, and I realized, you only got four members? Yep, so we have a vacancy, so I make a motion, we appoint Laurent Newshire to the Ethics Board. He's our, go ahead.
Oh, you need a second?
I need a second.
Oh, a second?
I have to, you second it?
Yeah, a second, what?
Okay, I just seen Laurent, he's been at every meeting so far, and I think it'd be a great idea, since he's had the interest, he'll have his fifth person, and it'd be a lot easier on some decisions, so.
I think it's something that we should leave for the new council to discuss and appoint.
Was there a second? I didn't hear a second.
Yeah, I said a second, because I didn't know what he was doing.
Okay, I didn't catch it, okay.
He kept talking, then he came out.
Sorry, Councilwoman.
And I was confused.
I'm sorry.
And moreover, has this individual applied to be on the Ethics Committee? Are we just appointing them by royal decree? I mean, has this person said, yes, I wanna do this? And I think that until that person says, yes, I wanna do this, we shouldn't be appointing anyone.
You didn't ask that person? Oh, all right, well.
So you haven't asked them, so I think we should wait until we ask them and see if they're willing to serve. Moreover, I think we should open it up to the general public to see anyone else is willing to serve, and solicit other applicants for this very important body, as we see yesterday how important it is. And then, again, give a little consideration to the incoming council to allow them to make that decision, but at bare minimum, I'll open it up to the community to see everyone else who wants to apply for it.
Any bells?
I think it's appropriate that you went through a process in establishing the Ethics Committee before. Those people that may have been looked at prior, perhaps they should be looked at again, and perhaps there's other people that wanna be involved, but I think that's probably a more appropriate way of doing it. Not to say that he's not capable, nor, but I don't know whether he's filled out, we just went through the DDA approval, I got nothing. All right, I'd like to see something like that before we make a decision.
Do you have a copy of his application? Because he probably checked many boxes.
No, this is a surprise to me, I don't have it handy.
You mean, are you asking, do we have a copy on record?
I suspect we do, I?
Because usually everybody checks most of the boxes.
I, I understand, I don't.
He may have done a?
I've not had any interest from him specifically about this, though.
He may have been on planning before the ethics was established, right? So.
That's true.
Councilmember Georges? Any comments?
Oh, I'm okay with it.
I'm just asking if you have comments, not asking your vote. All I'm gonna say is that I have had a terrible time recruiting anybody for anything. We are short on a number of boards, haven't had really any support to, once I turn that list over, to do that, and we've asked, I think, a few times, I know it's been requested, if anybody's interested, and, and right now, I have open seats and nothing to fill, and I feel sorry for the next person coming in, because there's not a lot of people jumping up and seats to fill.
We did have a lot of applications for the Ethics Council that last time. We had quite a few people we voted down, so, I mean, opening it up to allow some of those people to reapply, and consider all the people that are, you know, wanting to serve in that capacity, I think is a responsible thing to do for the community.
Mr. Newshire, maybe you remember, because you wrote the ordinance, staggered terms, correct?
Correct.
So, if we were to do this, what term would it be filling? Because we're short on, when was the first, end of the first term?
It would, it would depend on, I don't know on top of my head.
If I remember correctly, and I think I do, was it, what's her name?
Baris Swobos.
Thank you. Sorry, every time I think, I wanna say Snopes, and I wanna go Google, and I wanna make sure it's wrong, or whatever, but yes, she was the, when we voted, there was a one, a two, and a three year. I believe she was the one year. And, just about positive, she was the one year. So if she was the one year, then that would be expiring when? Did we set it on a calendar year, or did we set it on the year when we actually established?
I believe it was based on appointment, so, at the time of the appointment.
Great, that's what I'm asking, so, so then we would, how, what's the end of that year?
I'm looking.
I know, and I'm giving you the time to look. I mean, I would've looked ahead of time, I didn't, I'm sorry, we didn't know, I didn't know to look ahead of time. So take.
So I believe. June. No, I don't know. My apologies.
All the more reason to?
Well, what I was gonna say is, if, I believe one of those would be expiring or expired, and that would be the one we're filling, because it's missing. So the reason, so what I was gonna say is, we are actually only talking about being able to cover it in case something comes up, and the next council would have the opportunity, because it would be an expired term, right? Correct?
In June, right.
Correct, so that's all I'm.
Yeah, it's until June.
Yeah, roll call.
Okay. Councilmember Moffett?
No.
Mayor Portem Sampson?
Yes.
Mayor Scripture?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd?
No.
Councilmember Georges?
Yes.
But we, I should've said, we should've said, to make sure it's clear in his motion, filling the seat.
Yes, the swope seat, okay.
Yes, which is, filling, yes, because I'm?
This is pending his acceptance, of course.
Yeah. Pending his acceptance, yes.[1722.22]
Okay, I'll add that.
But that would be the.
It's the swope seat.
That would be, right, and that's the short, so that would actually be up pretty quickly, yes.
And Kevin, you can always call him and say, thanks for volunteering.
Just very quickly, okay, when I was reading the elements of the ethics, okay, in there, there's some language about having to fill out a, the elected official.
Back to him.
Having to fill out a financial statement, okay, showing what they.
You would have filled it out when, on planning.
No, we didn't.
We had an update, we were, we went through a process where we updated it last year, I believe.
Okay.
So, I'm going to look to you and I'm going to look to you, Mr. Nushai, because the two of you have both given me two different answers. So, my first question, before you even answer it.
Probably.
My first question is, just for clarity's sake, I thought all appointed positions. And I get, all appointed positions, so that would be traffic? That would be library? That would be all appointed positions, correct? Okay. And I believe I was told by one of you or both of you that you didn't think it was those positions.
I don't know how you.
You certainly don't have that many things and you said you don't.
I don't know how you do that with the DDA when their job is to vote to make themselves money, so.
I just said, I understand that point.
But he said all, you know.
No, but that one is different because of the business aspect and I think there was something.
That's their job.
DDA is an authority and they operate differently, has certain.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
So the library would fall into that too?
Yes.
All right, so we know that there's a due date of April 15th every year. So, that's.
But I'm asking, were they ever asked to fill them out in the first place? You said you didn't think so.
No, they were, they were, there was a whole group that were appointed that was reviewed by the Ethics Committee right when I arrived.
Yes, and I asked who has, what's the status and nobody could answer me.
Maybe good reason for it. Mr. Smith handled that portion of collecting all, both generating the forms and sending them out, collecting them back. I know that I received a series of them, I think I have about 20 in my possession. Those were ones that he, at the time, asked me to review. I presume that's not the complete and total number, though, I'm sure there are more. As to, you know, the repository in the city, yeah, I can't speak to that. If there are deficiencies, we need to fill them.
So, the question then is, could the two of you get together and compare what you might have? Find where the other ones are, if we can, and I think my other question to you, was any of the newly appointed people? Because I think we did make some new appointments.
They have not received it, as far as I know.
Okay, so we actually, because that is not, you don't wait until April 15th, you hand it to them when they come on board, correct? In fact, that would be in their orientation packet for the next council, right?
As far as council, absolutely.
So, can we please, because that would be, I mean, the fact that nobody knows for sure.
I volunteered in the email to step up and take ownership of this, which wasn't previously in the clerk's office.
I'm not blaming.
Well, someone has to, no, you're not. Someone has to take ownership of it to get it done.
And I'm obviously saying, oh, okay, well, I see the problem, we need to fix it.
It was a question to me too and I said, okay, there's a vacuum here, we'll, I'll take ownership of it and we'll get it done.
Perfect.
Well, add it to my list, of course.
Well, you can nail him too.
That's fine.
Or you can delegate. Delegation's awesome.
He has to review it, I'm not going to be the one who reviews and tells what, I'm just going to collect them, get them out.
Well, I don't think, it's not reviewing the actual things I'm asking about, I'm making sure that we have accounted for, yeah. Actually, Nick, how you doing? You got some time? Want to take that on? Because that sounds like a great.
We'll handle it.
One location only.
I'm messing with Nick, I am messing with Nick.
Well, we'll do it to the clerk's office, that's fine.
Yes, I'm messing with Nick.
Yeah, that took place back, I want to say March, April time.
I know, I filled one out when I started in May, so. And my assistant, my deputy filled one out.
There was a period of time, obviously, that it took for the board itself to receive, review, and approve.
I know. And once they received, you didn't approve them, if we had good record keeping, we would have our, somebody would have taken that and known to put those in a central location that was accessible by the appropriate people.
For all you know, they are already in a central location, we just have to find it.
Right. We just have to find where center.
I know where they are in our office. I know where they are in our office, we just got to see what you have versus what I have and we'll put it all in one spot.
Thank you.
That's fine.
Who brought that up? Nice job, dude. Did you have anything else you wanted to start a you-know-what storm on?
I'm just, I'm just waiting for the council comments.
Would you like me to get to those? Is that what you're?
That would be nice.
Well, you seem to have made something that.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, no, no other new business, you're the one that said yes and started asking questions. All right, old unfinished business, we have nothing, nothing tabled, public comments for items that are not on the agenda this evening.
There's somebody in.
Did you say up there? Oh, come on up. I thought you meant up there.
New.
Hello? I noticed you don't have a time limit.
Unless you're going to be 20 minutes, you're.
I don't know where to start.
Okay.
I'm flabbergasted. My name is Dwayne O'Neil, I was city manager here for a number of years. I'm not here to get into a debate with the mayor and the council, but I would like to make some comments uninterrupted. And I'm going to have to refer to the agenda, only so I can remember all the things that you've done tonight that are out of order. First of all, I think it was nice that you proposed an ordinance or something, where you rewrote the charter and you want to direct the city, new city manager coming in and their spending levels and stuff like that. That is something that should have come by and through the Finance Department, through the mayor and the council, through the city manager, through the city attorney, for him to draft averbage so that it comports with the charter and all applicable ordinances. You talked about today about this building on Hendrickson, on 65 Hendrickson, that's open to the elements? It's a nuisance per se? People are going in there, animals are going in there?
Animals.
You have the, you have the International Property Maintenance Code, where you can have a show cause hearing, where this council can deem that to be a nuisance per se and order the building either brought up to the current standards or torn down and put a levy against their property. You have those tools in your toolbox. Your building officials should have told you that, okay? That. Mr. Sampson brought up making a motion to appoint somebody to the Ethics Board. Don't you amend your agendas? You just brought that up, you can just make a motion to do whatever you want, whenever you want, however you want. When I was here, you're under Roberts rules and you also have charter, excuse me, council rules and regulations that are applicable? Those types of things, even you have applications, maybe I'd be interested beyond that Ethics Board. But out of the clear blue sky, you can do it because you have votes? No, that's not how it works. This is not a oligarchy. You know, this is, this is a, I'm flabbergasted. When I was here, I worked for five of these mayors that are on this board and we never had this. Never had this at all. The city manager is the long and the short of it. They run the city, that's why we're a strong council, we're a council manager form of government and everything's done through the city manager, period. You talk about not wanting to direct staff, that's against the charter, okay? But you just turn around and this poor Nick guy back here, he's going to try to do something with the website and you obviously had conversations with him. Scott Saravello is the acting city manager, has the authority to direct him to do whatever. When you talk about having a kiosk, BSNA has all those, all those modules where you can do that. You approved one module tonight for about five grand, that's about what they are, $5,000 a module. They can do that, where you can come right to the treasurer's counter, the building department counter or whatever and type in an address and get a building permit, do whatever you want, those modules are available. You don't have to reinvent the wheel, okay? I think the city attorney needs to take a stronger role with this and reel you guys in, because you're out of bounds. You're out of bounds and not doing this right. I've known August for only a little bit, we're not friends, we're acquaintances, I know him from Hamtramck. He's been around, I watched the meeting from September, I want to pull my hair out, watching it. You're going off like the butcher dropped a cleaver, half cocked. There's a process here, you have a process here. I think, Reese, man, mayor, your heart is in the right place, okay? But this isn't a strong mayor form of government, where you absolutely dominate everything. Nobody can get a word in hardly edgewise, you make every motion, but if there's something you don't like, you don't make that motion. Oh, I've never seen that before, ever. And I've only been doing this since 1975, so I don't have much experience. And it's not a criticism, you're on your way out and God bless you for wanting to serve. God bless all you guys for wanting to serve. You need to have a workshop, so you know what the heck you're doing, so you can come up here and do the business of the city in a proper form, okay? Now, you talked about having this Gov HR, James, I've known James forever, betraying him. A city this size, if you do something on the cheap, you're beaten, you're beaten, okay? It's a buyer's market right now, okay? Based on what I see here, I wouldn't come here for $125,000. I wouldn't. And I came here, when I came here, I was making $36,000 a year. And I wouldn't come here for a buck and a quarter. Because you guys are going off in five different directions. It's not right. It's not right, I know I'm being critical, but I've only watched a little bit of it and I've talked to some of the employees and they've asked me to run for mayor, they've asked me to run for council, they want me to do all this stuff. Well, I get paid when I'm on that side, I wouldn't do it on this side, because I'd pull my hair out, what little I got left. I mean, when you talk about not having any confidence in the budget you pass? You passed a budget you don't have any confidence in? Now, that one, I got to figure that one out. And you want to pay somebody $45,000 to come in and look at your books? How about if I do it for 15? I mean, really? I think, who am I going to do in 20 minutes? This OPEB thing for $10,600? That's too much, that's twice as much as you need to spend on that. Twice as much, I think. Now, are these the same ones that do your audit? Okay, that's where the problem lies, right there, that's where your problem lies. Why you don't have the people doing your audit, do this, because these are just add-ons to your, to your thing that are required by the, by the state treasurer's department. What else? And you just keep adding things to the agenda. If they're not on the agenda, you need to approve them, okay? You don't take things off the agenda, as Louis and I had discussed before, before you come to a council meeting. Once they're on the agenda and they've been published, the only way you remove them is come here and have a motion and have removed. Just like you have a motion and add them. You just, you can't do this willy-nilly. So, I'd be more than happy to put on, put on a workshop for you. I don't know much, but I know that. And I've worked with some great mayors, one, two, three, four, five, five of them. And each had their own idiosyncrasies. I think Bob Connor probably talked more than anybody else, but you got him beat by a long shot, by a long shot. The thing is, you want to, you want to present confidence to your electorate. And you do that by having a smooth running meeting, following the agenda and following Roberts rules. Are you still under Roberts rules? Okay, well, it's real simple, okay? And you need to, as a body, when you want to make an ordinance or a resolution or whatever, you need to discuss this here first, put it on the agenda. Is there a need? Have you got a problem? Do you have a problem with your finances? What are your problems? I noticed that you wanted to have best practices, you talk about. She should be bringing those to you.
She should.
That's right. And how long have you been here? Five months, give her a break, give her a chance. Who knows what she found in that office over there? I can only imagine what they find when they come and they replace me as city manager. You know, I got a stack for you. You know, I'll tell you what, wherever I've been, I've not been missed. You know why? Because I delegate to my staff and my staff knows what's going on. They don't need me, you need him, you need him, you need her, you need the staff people, that's what you need, okay? You don't need the city council coming in and micromanaging every little thing that they do. Okay, and you won't get anybody here, because these are city managers, and I know them all. I know the people that are out there in that pool right now. They watch these council meetings, believe me, they watch these council meetings. And they're not going to jump from the frying pan into the fire. Okay, so you're going to get what you get. And if it's worse, if it's not as bad here as it is where they're at, they'll come. But if it's worse, they're not coming. They're not coming, and we all know everybody, just like I know James. I mean, I've interviewed in the last six months, okay? You know, I'm 170 years old, but there's nobody following us out, there's nobody out there. You're going to wind up, if you're lucky, with a kid like that guy, he's got some, he's got some acumen, he's got some moxie. And I've only met him a couple of times and I probably just ruined your career. But that's who you want, you want to attract these young people, because that's all that's left. The rest of us baby boomers are all done, okay? And you're up there, I see you up there, we're all done. And the millennials, there's not as many millennials as we are. That's why there's 11 million jobs and people don't want them. You can say whatever you want about whether or not the federal government should have been doing what they're doing or not doing what they're doing, there just aren't the people out there and nobody, nobody wants to come into the public sector. You know where they're going? They're going into the charitable organizations, because they know it only takes three to hire and three to fire or four if you got seven. And in this business, you collect no votes. You're the greatest thing since ice cream when you come in. Most of the time, you have a 5-0 vote, 3-2, I wouldn't even bother coming over. But, you know, and the next thing you know, oh, I want you to do this for me. Well, no, 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 you don't do that, it's against the charter, I don't do those things. Because if I don't do it for this person, I don't for the next, and you collect no votes. And I'm telling you right now, if you, when you go through this process of hiring your next city manager, you better get 125 fixed and you better pay moving. You better pay whatever the heck they want if you're going to get somebody that's got some seasoning and won't be badgered by the city council, okay? I mean, that's one thing you know about me, I don't, I'm not badgered by anybody and that's why I don't last very long. Because I get people on there, they get 16 votes and they know everything all of a sudden. And they have, they have no experience whatsoever. And you try to tell them, don't blindside at a council meeting. You know, let's stump the manager, let's probably stump the manager. And that won't work, that won't work. So, my point is, you need to follow your processes and you're not. And you're all over the place and you need to streamline that. And hopefully, your next city manager, he or she, whoever it may be, will be strong enough that can push you and keep you on a straight and narrow, okay? I know that you had an attorney come from Ann Arbor, or Traverse City came down here. That's good, you should, that's good to have facilitators come in. And they've got some people at Michigan State, and though I'm a Wolverine, but they got a real good guy out of Michigan State that does facilitations. And when the new council takes their seats, you guys can all get together and do workshops. Because I used to have retreats, with my council every three months and bring them in there. And we would, now it's, there'd be more people there because of the Open Meetings Act and those types of things. But we hammered things out, so that when we came here, it was smooth and professional and everybody, you know, got along and those type of things. And that's all I got to say. Have a nice day.
Well, actually, would anybody like to, please? Have an account. It's not appropriate for public comment.
No.
It's not appropriate.
On this particular topic, I would agree. Thank you very much for your point of view.
I mean, you put it with my silhouette, you know, Reese, I wouldn't mind meeting you for a cup of coffee.
Anytime, well, anytime after November 15th.
That's exactly right.
November 15th.
That's exactly right, because I don't get involved in politics.
Anybody else? Items not on the agenda? Going on? Oh, that's just John, John, I thought you were coming, you're not, no, okay. All right. That would be you, Mr. Nushai.
Thank you, just a couple of things, if I may. Scott and I met with Mike Jones, those gentlemen, I had a meeting with Mike Jones, those gentlemen from Diversified Group Benefits, spoke to him about HR services, benefits, the employee handbook, we got a lot of good feedback and information from him. We hope to be able to present, you know, that soon, obviously, it's going to be, we presume, next council, they'll be making those determinations. But we thought it was, it was very helpful. And I personally believe, Scott will probably agree, I personally believe that these are services that the city needs. There's currently void with respect to these items. So, based on what I saw, I think council, any iteration of council would appreciate at least receiving and reviewing all that information. That's on the topic. We had an ethics ordinance, pardon me, ethics board meeting last night. It went on for some time, some of you may have watched it. It was the first one that we had. It was the first one that we had that had a complaint, obviously, or more than one complaint, but they had complaints. The process was, well, for someone like me, was very interesting. And I think it was very meaningful. We did find some, as we were bound to shortcomings, both with respect to our ordinance itself as well as the process overall. I think it behooves us, and August, I believe, came up with the idea, so I need to give him credit for it. It behooves us to have a workshop, probably with council, as well as the ethics board, to have a sit-down, to be able to discuss ways to improve our ordinance, ways to improve our forms, our process overall, and have any and all ideas come into the forefront. I think that, you know, I think they'll be hugely beneficial, as I agree with some of the statements over me tonight. It's a very important board that we hopefully almost never use. But when we do have the need for it, I think it needs to be one that, you know, has some improvements that are sorely needed. And then, third and last item, yesterday, we posted, August posted, a request to go into closed session. We received the lawsuit and a demand, a renewed demand with respect to that. So I'm asking that you, that we go into closed session at the appropriate time before we adjourn. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Or I can just ask the city manager for his part?
What's that?
I don't know, your city manager report's next.
Oh, I thought you wanted me to comment something.
No, I was skipping right by him.
I just didn't know if anyone had any questions on the open items report. Renes and I, you know, outside of that, we did sit through that meeting, talked up with the handbook. He asked when our last one was, and then asked if we still carried a pager to go hand-in-hand with the handbook.
Pager?
Because that's how old the handbook is.
Okay, now I get it.
So that's it for me tonight? I know, we have more to do.
Yes, council comments, you were waiting. Oh, sorry. Don't have anything at this time?
I'll pass it this moment.
At this moment, okay.
This moment.
Because you just can't wait. You've got to hear, okay? I know, right? So I was trying not to torture him, go ahead. You're going to wait too, okay, yes, I, go ahead.
All right. As you know, as you know, okay, we have an election coming up on November second. It's important for everybody to go out and vote. One of the big issues that we have going right now is the charter, all right? And so there's no misunderstanding, I'm for redoing the charter, I vote yes, okay? The concern I have is how it's being publicized on the negative side. And I just want to read you something, okay? This is something that was hung on my door. And it says, "The ambiguous and open-ended wording of the proposal sets the stage for a radical and unnecessary change to the fabric of our city." That's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. Twenty-five words, okay? I went to the website and I pulled up the ballot, okay? And here's what it says, okay, very simply. Shall there be a general revision of the Clotson City Charter? Period. Okay, so there's nothing confusing about it, it's straightforward, okay? Now, what people don't understand, okay, is that what we have, or what we have to work with, okay, is really governed by the state of Michigan. What we do in the revision, okay, and it's not going to be a group of people getting together and trying to work their best, okay? They're going to have guidance, because there will be professionals there helping them on that. And these people stepped up and volunteered to help our city, to help the city grow forward, not grow backwards. On that. Now, one of the things that a lot of people should do is go in to the internet and pull off, okay, the city charter revision. Okay, this is what's going to tell you what we can do and what we can't do. Because keep in mind, once we're done, all right, it has to go before the Attorney General of the state of Michigan. And he has to say yea or nay. And then, it goes to the governor for signature, okay? And then, we've got a new charter. On that. That's the process, okay? This is not a process, okay? This is innuendo. On that. But, okay, this is our process here, this is called democracy, okay? Everybody has an opinion, okay? And I've given you mine. I vote yes, not no. That's it.
Did you want to reclaim your, anybody want to reclaim their? No? I have nothing.
That was well put.
And we don't adjourn, we're actually...
Make a motion.
May I redo the motion and maybe you can adapt for the closed session?
I know, I was just going to read that. I said, we're not going to motion adjourn, I said, I was about to say, we're going to make a motion to go into closed session for the purposes of reviewing pending litigation as permitted under the Open Meetings Act. They don't have the section, but...
Fifteen point two-six-eight E.
Fifteen point two-six, and...
Second.
Wait, I wasn't done, what time is it? I just, what time is it?
Twenty-two oh-seven.
Ten oh-seven.
Twenty-two oh-seven, so ten minutes, so twenty-two seventeen is one more.
So you have ten minutes in between?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's a little second. Do we plan to come back for business?
We have to take a little...
Yeah, we have to come back to adjourn, we have to.
I just put business, people like to know. People like to know, so they're going to see if they're going to sit here or not, that's all.
I apologize, you're correct.
Okay. Mayor Portem Sampson?
Yes.
Mayor Scripture?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Councilmember Georges?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
We will be in closed session at ten seventeen, you have ten minutes, folks.
Do I need to...
There's no... there's not the roll call. It's just back to order.
Let's check them.
All right.
Fifty-eight.
I move that we instruct the city manager to continue negotiations in the spirit of...
City attorney.
Or city attorney. I do that all the time.
Authorize. It's okay.
I authorize. The city attorney... I move that we authorize the city attorney to engage in negotiations in the spirit in which we held the discussion.
Second.
Roll call.
Discussion? No. Okay. Councilman Shepard?
Yes.
Councilmember Georges?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Sampson?
Yes.
Mayor Scripture?
Yes.
That passes.
Motion to adjourn.
Aye.
Second. I always like to take my time on this since you already left me here this morning.
Because I'm done.
Twenty-three. Councilmember Georges?
Yes.
Moffett?
Yes.
Sampson?
Yes.
Scripture?
Yes.
Shepard?
Aye.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.